Would you please call?
Councilwoman Del Chapo, Councilmember Shealy.
Here.
Councilmember Sacrin.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell. Councilmember Brady. Councilmember Gregory. Councilmember Waring. Councilmember Seaking. Councilmember Shade. Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Appel. Councilwoman Jackson.
Here.
Mayor Teklinberg.
Uh, here. And if you'd like to join us, Councilmember Appel is going to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, since we're all getting together in person for the first time in a while, I couldn't get away with my standard moment of silence. So I went and um, found the Jewish prayer for the health, well-being, safety, protection of the government. So if you'll indulge me. Our God and God of our ancestors, with mercy, accept our prayer on behalf of our country and its government. Pour out your blessing upon this land, upon its inhabitants, upon its leaders, its judges, officers and officials, who faithfully devote themselves to the needs of the public. Help them understand the rules of justice you have decreed, so that peace and security, happiness and freedom will never depart from our land. God, whose spirit is in all creatures, we pray that your spirit be awakened within all the inhabitants of our land, uproot from our hearts hatred and malice, jealousy and strife, plant love and companionship, peace and friendship among the many peoples and faiths who dwell in our nation. Grant us the knowledge to judge justly, the wisdom to act with compassion, and the understanding and courage to root out poverty from our land. May it be your will that our land be a blessing to all who dwell on earth, and may you cause all peoples to dwell in friendship and freedom. Speedily fulfill the vision of your prophets, quote, "Nation shall not lift up sword against nation, neither shall they learn war anymore," end quote. All of them, from the least of them to the greatest, shall know me, and let us say amen.
Amen. If you'd like to join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. And um, it is so uh, nice to be meeting in person. Again, this is our first meeting in person now in almost fifteen months, and so wonderful to welcome our citizens here in person as well. Thank you for coming, coming out and joining us this evening. We're going to start our agenda with a resolution honoring Edward Earl Ledford. Is uh, is Ms. Ledford and uh, his daughter, Ms. Brady here? If y'all would please come forward, I will uh, read this proclamation and then present it to you. And also note that I think we have uh, family and uh, and staff of CDC who's joining us by Zoom as well. So uh, welcome uh, to the meeting. And and I I did mean also let everyone know that um, this is our first in-person meeting, but it's also the first time we've done a hybrid meeting where we're on Zoom. People can still join us uh, by the internet. Uh, and you see some faces there and names over on the screen. So uh, be patient with us, just in case we get a a little glitch with our technology, but I believe it's all uh, working well. It certainly seems to be uh, so far. So uh, for our first proclamation, whereas the city of Charleston wishes to recognize one of South Carolina's most distinguished citizens, Edward Earl Ledford, who lived a life of service to the Charleston community. He led the merger of Horizon House and Oak Grove Children's Home to create Carolina Youth Development Center, which he directed for thirty years, a lifetime of service. He, his leadership and passion for CYDC helped to expand the center's services to Berkeley County in partnership with the Tri-United Way and other community partners, and to raise funds to build and operate Kalen Lacy Center for Children. Edward Ledford was also responsible for bringing big brothers, big sisters to CYDC, which where it operated faithfully for forty years until becoming an independent entity in 2019. Edward remained an active supporter and tireless advocate for children and families long after his tenure as CEO at CYDC. And and Edward led with his heart and worked tires tirelessly to improve the lives of thousands of children and families throughout the Low Country, as well as the entire state of South Carolina. He was awarded Social Worker of the Year from the National Association of Social Workers Coastal South Carolina Chapter, where he also served as president. He worked as a field education liaison with USC College of Social Work, worked as an adjunct professor with several local colleges, and served as an advisor on the Governor's Advisory Council on Juvenile Delinquency Prevention and the President for S- South Carolina Social Welfare Forum. Edward Earl Ledford was also awarded the Malcolm D. Haven Award from the Coastal Community Foundation. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John J. Teklinberg, Mayor of the City of Charleston, on behalf of all our citizens and our city council, hereby recognize Mr. Ledford's lifetime of service, working to improve child welfare in Charleston and across the Low Country, enjoying his family and loved ones, and grieving his losses, remember, as we remember, the lasting legacy he has left on our community. Mrs. Ledford.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This means a lot to us. Ed lived a long life of service to the community. He loved Charleston. He loved the Low Country. And he was always busy, working tirelessly to make it better. He left his uh, full-time paid work in his sixties, but he continued coaching part-time at the College of Charleston. Gave that up when the athletes were running faster than him. And then he went on to be the liaison for field education for social workers, guiding them and helping them with their career. At eighty, he finally decided to retire from that job. But that didn't stop him. He continued to volunteer. And his last volunteer job was helping at the food bank at Bethel Methodist Church um, up until the pandemic, which stopped, stopped that work for him. But thank you so much. Um, I know that he lived here for over fifty-five years, and some folks may not know him, but uh, we appreciate the opportunity of sharing his legacy with those that are here. And we hope that his life work will inspire others to love their community and and their neighbors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Ledford. Is Shannon O'Brien with us uh, this evening? There Shannon, come forward Shannon, if you would. I saw your name on the chair over here, so I was um, I wasn't sure just yet. So I have a proclamation recognizing um, this amazing woman um, who you will hear about uh, just now. She's come a little closer. Uh, whereas Shannon Walsh O'Brien was born in Charleston, South Carolina. Do you have any family you'd like to have come up and join you? That'd be fine. We got the whole section over here. We got a cheering section, where she lived with her parents and seven siblings, all of who swam at the Jewish Community Center when they were kids near their home in West Ashley. And Shannon completed, competed her entire adult life as a competitive member of the Palmetto Masters Swim Team. Shannon's mother, Daisy Walsh, worked as a swim coach for the City of Charleston's youth swim team well into her eighties and still swims weekly. And Shannon worked for the Charleston County School District for more than thirty years as a teacher, a coach, and a teacher specialist before retiring. In order to combine her love of swimming and teaching, Shannon Walsh O'Brien began a nonprofit called the Low Country Aquatic Project Swimming, LAPS, known as, which in seven years of operation, listen to this, has trained more than five thousand kindergarten and first grade students from twenty Title One schools in swimming and water safety. That's really remarkable. Shannon Walsh O'Brien is an extraordinary example of a public servant, teaching the wonderful benefits of exercise and water safety to children all throughout the Low Country. Now therefore, I, John J. Teklinberg, Mayor of the City of Charleston, along with city council, do hereby proclaim, May twenty-fifth today, 2021, it's Shannon Walsh O'Brien Day in the City of Charleston.
Hi, I'm completely humbled by this proclamation and um, my work with LAPS. It's been a labor of love. And perhaps some of my staff here that's been with me um, the entire time. This would have been, we would have served the children this year, year nine, but with COVID, we couldn't. We plan on um, continuing. But it's my partnership with the City of Charleston that was, we were able to do what we did. And I really want to recognize the Recreation Department Aquatics Director Lori Stella JJ. Y'all stand up for me. They were so supportive to be and have been there for me all this time. And it's made us be able to serve all these children in the City of Charleston. It's amazing. And we have saved lives. And I've heard a story from a teacher who um, at Sanders Clyde, which is right across the street from the pool, whose daughter took swimming with LAPS. And they were away at Myrtle Beach, and all of a sudden a five-year-old was missing. And the girl that had taken swimming lessons from LAPS jumped in and saved that child. And the mother told me, Shannon, if she hadn't have taken swimming lessons, there's no way she would have gone in that water. So that's like my, my favorite story, and I'm honored to have been able to be a part of LAPS and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. And um, I'm just going to say personally, I've been over to the pool while uh, Shannon and the LAPS team have been given these lessons, and it's really remarkable. And it occurred to me as we went through the last few years of year after year, storm after storm, and uh, you know, flooding that's occurred in our city, that part of being resilient as a city is that everyone in the City of Charleston ought to know how to swim. Really, everybody in Charleston ought to know how to swim. And Shannon, you've uh, you're taking us there, and and your creation of LAPS is is a remarkable achievement. Thank you again so much. So um, next we have a uh, presentation to be given to us by the wonderful folks at the Clemson Design and Architectural Center. Uh, Ray Huff is the director, David Pastor is the senior lecturer. And this was requested uh, by Councilmember Waring after, even though we've had years of collaboration with Clemson, just recently, they built this amazing walkway and dock over in the Ardmore Division, West Ashley. And after Councilmember Waring mentioned it at last meeting, I went over there myself and took some pictures and walked on it. It is really beautiful, y'all. And it's provided to us lovingly, at no charge, by the students that uh, Ray and David mentor over there. So without further ado, Ray, David, y'all want to give us a little presentation? Let's go Tigers.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, before they get going, um, you know, with Fort Carolina, you Clemson plays one another. Historically, we have a blood draw. And we try to give blood to help obviously the community and the state at large. I don't think it's any secret that I'm a big Carolina fan, okay? But these gentlemen and students in this program that Clemson has been gracious enough to extend down into the Low Country, has exponential benefits. Not only from the students gaining experience, the beauty that they leave behind is generational. And I'm not saying that to be magnanimous. Hopefully, these screens will, will show you a little bit what we all get to enjoy in person. They draw on their contacts to give at minimal costs, not only to this city, but this county. It's a tri-county benefit or metro area benefit. And very, most of us don't know what they do. Most of us on this council don't know what they do. I know I didn't know the extent of what they have done until I witnessed it in person. And they do it in areas sometimes that don't even expect it. So that impact that you're about to see, we need to be an ally to. It shouldn't be them or us. It should be we, that we help make sure that this program uh, stays in this area and is enhanced in this area and and grows in this area. Thank you for all what you all do.
Thank you, Councilmember. David?
There we go. All right. Thank you, Councilmember. I prefer the invitation and the kind words. It's really nice. And and I promise I didn't put a tiger paw up there just to get in your craw. And then thank you, Mr. Teklinberg, for allowing me to be here today. Um, actually, I have the uh, well, Ray Huff that you're with me, as well as a couple of students, which um, maybe when we get to the end, feel free to ask them a question or two. They were two that worked on our previous project and will be also working with us here in the fall on something new. Um, the tiger paws up there just to kind of make sure everybody knows we're with Clemson. And one of the main uh, you know, being a land-grant institution, is that it's our job to give back to the state. And so it's our dedication to service, collaboration, something that has really driven a lot of the work that we've done over the years. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Um, we're located in the cigar factory, for those of you who don't know. Uh, have been for about five years now and plan to be at least for another five until we maybe move on to be in our um, own building. But within there, there's architecture. We, we teach landscape and landscape architecture, um, architecture of both graduate and undergraduate levels, as well as we have programs in historic preservation and urban design. And I'm glad to say that all our programs that work there out of the center are all very focused in service learning projects. And they all do stuff within the city. We're closely with Mayor Teklinberg on several initiatives. Um, so just keep that in mind, outreach. Um, but I direct the program that came up here on this slide. This is the Architecture and Community Build Program. And what that is, it's a certificate program. Students that come to Clemson for a master's degree um, are interested in this. And I'm basically just, I've written something, so I don't get it all mixed up. It's, but for more than ten years, the Community Build Program has been developing relationships with local partners to engage our students in various community-oriented, design-build, service-learning projects. And these projects seek to serve the community through direct engagement and tailored design solutions, while the students gain experience and learn how architecture can be a catalyst for positive change. Um, we can go ahead and jump to the next one. Um, there's a quick map here. Um, and the red, orange dots are going to show you some of the sites in which we've done projects. And you may find your district is one of them. And we just haven't had you to one of our meetings, and you know the project, but didn't know we were involved. So we'll maybe catch you all up on it. And you'll notice there's a couple that are down in Johns Island that are off this map. Otherwise, it would have gotten a little out of scale. And actually, one in Greenville, which we're not going up there anymore. That was, there was too many, too many miles on my truck doing that project. So uh, we'll leave that to main campus to do those projects. Um, we can jump to the next slide. I'm going to start by kind of showing you stuff, starting way back in 2010. When we started um, trying to get people to be, uh, give a chance to the students to do these projects, uh, took it, took a chance. And the first person who really was our partner on that was Mark Sloan at the Halsey. And so we would couple with them on pro, on shows that would come through. And we were working closely with the city in this. This is a project that was actually in Marion Square and stood during Spoleto. And it was a kiosk showing um, different events that were happening there. It would light up blue at night, and then it would be a little bit more calm in the daytime. Uh, the next step too, we can go ahead and jump the next slide, is uh, build a mobile movie screen. And during Spoleto, there was a premiere of a movie that was shown here. Um, go to the next one. This is one I'm particularly proud of. This was a project at the Halsey in which we created a stair platform for a show called uh, Return to the Sea Salt Works. A Japanese artist by the name of Motoya Yamamoto came, and he lays this intricate saltwork across the, the, the ground. It was a great concept. It was no way to really take it in as part of the show, uh, given the confines of the, the Halsey Gallery. So uh, we fabricated a platform. It had about an eight-foot cantilever in which people could actually get up on and see. And at the time, it was the hot, most highest uh, uh, turnover of people coming through to see a show that the Halsey had ever had, which was pretty cool. But it was at this time that we really started to understand that these are very impactful projects to go into the community, but they were temporary. And that kind of, that kind of got at me after a little while. So uh, we did one more with the Halsey, this next one here, which was a bamboo geodesic dome made completely out of bamboo and uh, recycled bicycle tires. But again, always trying to push limits of design and architecture, whether they ended up needing some cross bracing below afterwards or not. Um, we can scroll to the next slide. Um, at this point, we're really focusing on trying to do some permanent structures. And we're also trying to find partnerships. Uh, we know that everything we do is stronger with the more people we can work with. So we started to work with some of our extension agencies. Uh, this was brought to us project by our Extension for Community and Economic Development. And so a gap shed is something in which farmers can go ahead and use to process their vegetables um, so that they can go to sale. Um, this was also done with a nonprofit Sweetgrass Garden, and this is a Johns Island project just off of Plowground. Uh, the one following is also one that's right next to it. It ended up being, this is a reclaimed single-wide trailer, sixty-foot long that we took from the chassis, rebuilt completely and framed, and it houses a commercially graded kitchen, uh, one in which allows uh, farmers to share um, in the area and process at DEHEC and USDA certified ways. This was a partnership we did with College of Charleston. And uh, make sure I don't say wrong, they're uh, I think the Riley Center for uh, Social Impact and Healthy Living. They went ahead and they've done, they brought the money to the project. We went ahead and created this, this prototype in which uh, now is still being used. And this is where we go up to Greenville, the next slide, uh, build a second one up there. Um, and Mill Village Farms up there is still running that one. Again, so that the whole concept was so local foods could get into the schools, and schools required DEHEC and USDA certification, and local farmers couldn't do that. So those two projects uh, came from that partnership. Now we'll get into COVID. Um, we're not jumping chronologically. I'm not trying to keep these as sort of groupings. We had a project that we were working on with the city and the conservancy uh, back in the fall of 2020, or spring of 2020, when that canceled at spring break, we were at a loss for what can we do? And we wanted to do something. So we partnered up with MUSC. They had created, and a lot of you probably spent some time in line at this uh, drive-through testing center. It was one of the first in the country, if you didn't know that. And it also is very uh, cutting edge in the way they queued um, people in line. So they needed help documenting that so that they could share it worldwide. So our students, weeks, I mean, we're, this is from spring break on, we're talking six or seven weeks. Helped them put together an eighty-page document, which they shared. And during that process, we're realizing that it was not equitable. You need a car to be able to go through this. And those who were coming by bus were catching COVID on the trips over there. So how could we start to give um, testing and screening to to people when they don't have a vehicle? Uh, the next slide goes into the summer, where we started to work on what we called PPODs, or Portable Point of Dispensing. Uh, we also nicknamed them Porta Swabs. For economics cases, we could go ahead and and purchase portable toilets, uh, never used, and recut them, apply acrylic faces. Uh, we did all the studies with MUSC as far as how we can get good clean air exchange. And the image on the right side um, is at Metter's Construction, who ended up actually building about thirty of those for MUSC. And that's how they're now going forward. And these will be things that they'll use, not just for COVID, but can be for strep throat or any other kind of things down the line in which they can go ahead and keep the, their uh, the people working safe. Go to the next slide. Um, we like to work with nonprofits. Uh, these are a couple of projects that we did with uh, Enough Pie. The Bat Shack is a mobile um, indigo dyeing station in which I can move from school to school and go ahead and do seminars with our, with students. And on the right is a project that's along King Street. Um, it's right behind the First African Evangelical Christian Church and near like Food Lion, uh, up in that neck of the woods. But it was a partnership between that church, uh, Enough Pie, the Dart Library, and this, this structure is there is sort of an out, outside uh, place to read for students and after-school programs. And Redux also kind of helped with the murals and some things along there. Uh, the next slide is actually Redux. We did a project with them in which we helped them design out their gallery space. Articulating walls, giving them flexibility of what kind of shows could go on. Uh, so we worked interior as well, built the uh, reception desk and things like that. Um, if we go to the next slide. This is one that's, that's pretty near and dear, a very recent one we did, uh, which was a partnership with Greenheart Project and the Charleston Housing Authority. So this one was uh, this was a tricky one. We had to work not only with the city, the housing authority, but we had the, this project had to go before the BAR and get approval. And it's, at this point, I should note that these projects that you're seeing here, with the exception of the two commercially graded kitchens, are ones that we do in a semester's time. So we're talking four months, start to finish. We do community sessions, we, we go through design iterations, we do a full set of construction documents, get building permits, and in this case, had to go before BAR and get approval. So anyway, this is one in which it's, it's uh, very successful now, and Greenheart does great work bringing they also have a, a farmer's market there weekly. Uh, we'll go to the next one. And this is going to be a series that I show you now are really where uh, our probably tightest partnership has been to date, which has been the Charleston Parks Conservancy. Um, we, we really rely on them and any of our nonprofits on being like sort of the boots on the ground, getting uh, community excitement for us coming in. We don't want to look as like we're flying in to try to save people. But what we want to do is to be able to get our students' experience and be able to apply our skills in a positive way. So you know, these projects have a few years in the making for sure, and then we can kind of come in and help put it together quickly. This was a, a seating and shade structure, which was a playground renovation up at Corinne Jones in the Wagner Terrace neighborhood. Um, the next slide here, this is uh, sort of was the, our big kickoff for the community garden. You know, push that's been happening through all the neighborhoods. Uh, this was one we did with uh, the Magnolia Community Garden. We built this structure first with no beds in place, and then the garden kind of grew around it, one of those Field of Dreams sort of uh, things. And the, the community has taken that on and enjoyed it. Uh, moving forward to the next slide, uh, this is over on James Island in the Medway Community Garden. That community garden was in place, but they didn't have any bridge of pools. Um, we really try to create these structures as places to uh, commune, but also for teaching. Um, a teaching aspect is important. Uh, and if we move on to the next one here, uh, we came back to Corinne Jones uh, not too long ago and made another one. This one's sort of special to me because I live in that neighborhood, but also it's one in which it caters to the new community garden, but also plays to the playground. So it has birthday parties going on there weekly uh, while it services the community garden, which is, is taken off as well. Uh, now we're getting in over to uh, Waring's District. And this project here is, is great because this is one in which it was completely city-funded. Uh, it was a project that was on the books with Jason Cronenberg. And I, and I need to mention that Jason has been involved with all of these. I'm just bringing him up now. But he comes and he's meets with our students, he sits in on our reviews, he helps us coordinate with uh, the City Parks Department and their, their work. So it's, it's been a wonderful relationship. And in this project in particular, we, our students work very closely with folks in the Parks Department. The pouring of concrete, learning firsthand from their masons and The pouring of concrete, learning firsthand from their masons and grounds crews, we, it's just the students light up because they're tired of hearing me talk. And the folks at the city are just loving the chance to get to work with our students. This project next here is the one that Waring has been bringing up. This is Mulberry Crossing. Interestingly, this isn't even a park yet, you know? It's just a need, a bridge over sort of a drainage pond. And it is, it's one in which we're looking forward to it being the precipice for new stuff to happen over in these neighborhoods. And we're real excited about that. And the next project going forward with the Parks Conservancy this fall. Like I mentioned before, I've got a couple of students here that are happy to answer. I don't want to go over. I don't even know what my time was, but I tried to make it quick. There's also a website at the bottom of that, so you can follow along on all our projects. It's ClemsonCommunityBuild.com. Anyway. Talk quick.
All right, so I'm John Owens. I'm actually a graduate student with Clemson who decided to take the Community Build year-long program. And it's surreal seeing that up there because you'd be surprised at an architecture school, this is my sixth year, and that's the first thing that I designed that actually got built. And so like, it's still just weird to see it. Yeah, hopefully not the last for sure, but it was awesome experience. Like not only just actually learning how to do construction documents, talking to a structural engineer, always learning that your beams aren't big enough. Like you always think in the design and on paper that they're big enough, but they are never big enough. And then the best part, as Waring would know, is the actual community aspect of it. I think the best part was just going to site every single day for a month straight and just seeing all the people that were then... Oh, okay, my bad. I usually get told I have a booming voice, but the best part was just going to site every single day and seeing community members that are driving by, like slow down to see what you're doing, or people on the bike way, get off their bikes, and then talk about how excited they are to have their kid like bike down this little bridge that you're doing. And for me, like, that was the best part. Every time we go back there just to take pictures or just because I'm in the area, it's always covered with people. So it was an awesome experience.
Hi, I'm Mia Walker. I'm an undergraduate student at Clemson. I'll be a fourth year this coming semester. And like John said, I think like the main part of this project was not only, you know, being able to design something and have it be built, but seeing the reaction that the community gave was like really, really important. I think during our review, we had a gentleman speak up about how this impacted, this would impact, you know, generations to come and how he could teach his grandchildren to fish. And I think that's something that, you know, is a reward to us, like not only having this finished, but knowing that it's getting back as well.
I didn't really have the comments to make, other than we appreciate the opportunity to tell you some of the things we're doing, but it's really David and these young people showed, so let's give a big hand.
Yes. So thank you all very much. I mean, seeing the projects is just amazing. And boy, are we glad to give you an opportunity for this experience because we've all benefited, our whole community has. So David, students, thank you all. I do also want to share with council very briefly, there's three divisions, right, Ray of the program here, and there's the Historic Preservation Division, and they've helped the city on many initiatives, including elevating our homes and in our Dutch Dialogues, they hosted us for that conference. Now, in addition, their Urban Resilient Design Component will be assisting the city in our big project with the Corps of Engineers, the three-by-three study to help make sure that the design is appropriate and best for Charleston. So I mean, there are just so many, so much value to our relationship, we can't thank you enough. Go Tigers. All right.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing. I would hope that we can erect a plaque on these items shown, with these students' names and certainly the program being recognized, because as they grow up and become parents and come back with their children one day, they'll be able to look at that plaque and say, you know, when I was a student way back in 2021, this is what we did.
That's a great idea. We can do that. Terrific, thank you. So one other little, two other announcements, if I may, before we go forward with our public hearings. Spalletto and Piccolo Spalletto open this coming Friday. So in addition to getting quote "back to normal" by having in-person meetings, well, it frankly feels like somebody just turned the switch back on after COVID now, and we're getting back to so many normal things that we love and enjoy like Spalletto. So y'all pick up a special edition of the city paper wherever you go, and there's a program in here with all the Piccolo Spalletto events and information about Piccolo Spalletto. It starts Friday and lasts for about two and a half weeks, and of course, Spalletto Festival USA as well. Finally, being May 25th, I want to acknowledge the one-year anniversary of the terrible murder of George Floyd a year ago. And then also publicly acknowledge a week and a half ago, the video that our community saw of Jamal Sutherland as he was killed last January at the county jail. And we view this as a horrible tragedy at the intersection of mental health treatment and the criminal justice system. And I think we have to acknowledge that and work with our community to improve those services and policing and criminal justice so this cannot happen again. I do want to let council know, you know, our valued partner, the Medical University, expertise in so many areas, including mental illness and treatment. I called Dr. Cole. We had a meeting this past week of city staff and with staff from the Department of Psychiatry and with Dr. Cole. And he plans to form, along with our assistants, a regional task force to come up with recommendations to address both mental health treatment and policing matters as those two converge. So I did want to acknowledge that for everyone. Thank you. Next is our public hearings, and normally Christopher Morgan presents these to us. Christopher, are you out there? Are you online? And we're going to start with, the first one is a resolution to adopt the amended street tree manual in the city of Charleston. Christopher?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council members. I hope you can hear me. Actually, this first one is our Parks Department has put this together, and I'm not sure if there's somebody from the Parks who's going to talk about this one.
I see Jason Cronenberg standing up.
He's going to make like a tree and sit back there.
Okay.
Jason, can you come up to the, or Julia?
Julia Copeland from our legal department, Jason Cronenberg from our Parks Department. Julia?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Just so you know, you guys have already approved by resolution the actual manual. This is a required public hearing because as part of the manual, we are altering the mitigation fee based on the diameter of the tree. So that's why we're here tonight.
All right. Did anyone want to be heard on this matter?
No, no one has signed up to speak on this matter.
Okay. Do we? Second. We have a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it. Number two, Mr. Morgan.
Okay, I'm going to screen share here, and hopefully you all see all this. Okay, can you all see the blue screen? I hope you can.
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. So the first item is here at 2012 Meeting Street Road. This is item E2, tax map 4661600012. It's about a third of an acre. It's to rezone this property from general business to light industrial. As you can, I hope you can see my cursor on the map here. Oops, didn't mean to do that. On the map here, the property is outlined with the black outline, and it is adjacent to other light industrial that's in the city, also adjacent to some commercial property that is under Charleston County jurisdiction. And then everything further to the north is in North Charleston, so it's at the upper reach of our city limits. It was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and they recommend approval seven to zero on this. It's in our comprehensive plan as adjacent to this job center and industrial area in the neck. That's part of why we recommended for it. Here is an aerial view. You can see a large auto lot and auto establishment to the north, and then railroad tracks across to the west, a vacant lot and adult establishment to the south, and then further to the south, a gas station. And here is another image of the subject property. Residential structure is currently on the property. And here is the residential structure that's on the property. And here's just another street view and another view from the street. So that is that item before you in E2. And staff and planning commission recommend approval to the light industrial classification.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
And no one has signed up to speak on this matter.
No one signed up. Would anyone here like to make a comment on this matter? Hearing none, it comes to council. We have a motion to approve in a second. Do you have a question, Councilmember Mitchell?
They said exactly, exactly what they're going to put there yet. What's?
It would be a location that would build cabinetry, I believe, and a contractor's office, and I think some light construction of cabinetry items for structures.
Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Number three, I'd like to announce I'll be recusing myself from this matter.
This is on 1908 Second Drive in West Ashley, tax map 350050006. It's two one hundredths, or twenty one hundredths of an acre. It is a recommendation of SR2, single-family residential. It's in the Dupont-Wapu Overlay District that we share with Charleston County, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval eight to zero on this. It is in an area that we call suburban, so the single-family residence, SR2, is quite in line with that. And here is an image of the subject property, as you can see, a single-family residence is there. And staff and planning commission recommend approval of the SR2 for this property.
And no one has signed up to speak on this matter. We did receive two comments online that expressed concerns about business trucks disturbing the neighborhood and the business being too big for the property. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak to that matter?
Hearing none, it comes to council. Have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second. Councilmember?
Can I just ask the clerk or somebody? I thought this was single-family, so why would the comment have to do with the business? Can you figure that out?
I do not know. That's just, that's what they put in their comment.
Okay, but we are zoning it single-family. We're all, and...
Christopher?
Yes. It is a single-family designation. You know, obviously, in a single-family house, you could have a custom home occupation that the owner of the house or resident of the house could occupy and have a office there, but otherwise, it would need to be a single-family zone property.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it. Number four.
Okay, this is 738 St. Andrews Boulevard, tax map 418150081. It's a quarter of an acre. It's a request for general office zoning. It was in the county's St. Andrews Overlay District in Charleston County, and it was an office designation in that district. It was recommended for the GO eight to zero by Planning Commission. It is in our highway designation in our current plan under St. Andrews, so the office designation would be appropriate for that. Here is an image of the structure, and you can see it has signage and has been renovated in such a way to be an office at present. And both staff and planning commission recommended for the GO.
And no one has signed up to speak on this matter.
I'll second.
And can I, for council, can, when y'all are making motions and seconds, could you make sure you've got your mic turned on, just so we can pick you up on the recording? Thanks.
Move for approval.
Okay. Did anybody present want to speak on this matter? Let me ask before we take it to council. All right, thank you. Any comments or questions from council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Morgan?
Okay. This is E5 at 3919 Savannah Highway in the Red Top area of West Ashley, tax map 285000205. It's a 1.83-acre parcel. It's a request of zoning general business. It was zoned community commercial in Charleston County. It's a vacant parcel. Planning Commission recommended for this rezoning, for the zoning by seven to zero vote. Here is an image of it in our current plan. It also is in our highway designation, so the GB would be appropriate for that. Here you see the undeveloped property. Of course, there is some wetland area that would not be able to be developed, but there is a good bit of high area, highland area adjacent to the highway, and that is where any new structures would have to go. And again, staff and planning commission recommended approval for the general business on this property.
And no one has signed up to speak on this matter.
Would anybody present like to speak on?
Move for approval.
Seeing none, it goes to council. We have a motion to approve in a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Morgan?
Okay. And the final item before you in public hearings is E6 at Floyd Drive. This will be a future tax map number. It's part of an existing apartment complex that has recently been constructed. It's about a quarter acre. This was a portion of the right-of-way that previously had been unzoned, that needed to be zoned to the general business category. The remainder of the apartment complex, as you can see from this image, the vast majority of the apartment complex was zoned general business, and apparently, the developer did not get this accomplished before they began construction on the apartment complex, because of course, the apartment complex is now built. Planning Commission recommended for this GB with an eight to zero vote, and it is in our neighborhood center designation in the current comprehensive plan, so that would fit with the general business. And here is an image, this is when the site was under construction, and it's an extension of Floyd Drive that was not built on with the roadway, but ultimately, it had the apartment units that were built upon it, and these are now complete on the site.
And no one has signed up to speak on this matter.
Anyone present would like to address this matter? Hearing none.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it. That is the end of our public hearings. Next is our approval of May 11th minutes. Any additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Next up, and we so thankful to have you all here with us tonight, again, in person, is our citizens' participation period. Madam Clerk, we have about thirty people who have signed up to speak, and we normally allot just a half hour for this period. So I'm going to respectfully ask you, try to keep your remarks to a minute, and then we'll notify you when a minute's up, and don't cut you off right in the middle of the Senate, but just finish your thought, and we'll be able to proceed. So if y'all would come forward and speak into the microphone would be great, not only for us to hear, but that also allows citizens who are on the Zoom call to be able to hear as well. Or we can bring the microphone to you.
All right, first is Woodrow Norris.
Please come forward. And, and before you start, if you don't mind, maybe call out three people at a time. So you know, the next in line kind of knows.
Yes.
Who's, and if you need me to bring the microphone to you or something like that, just let me know.
This, so the next speakers we have, I have God, Godfrey Galaguchi, Mary Willis, and Claire Goodwin.
We'll have y'all in that order. So please proceed, thank you, sir.
Hi, uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Can you speak into the mic?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
We can.
How's everyone?
Terrific.
All right, cool.
Uh, I'm the owner of Booze Pops here in Charleston, South Carolina. I'm here today for this mobile ordinance that's going forward, that's going to completely shut down our business. We created this business here in Charleston and made this business in Charleston. And now we're, they're looking at shutting it down with the two hundred and fifty foot ordinance of being no mobile food trucks within any restaurants, uh, as well as the one thirty. I'm asking every, the council members to vote no on this ordinance. This ordinance, what we do, I, I know the name Booze Pops is miss, is deceiving. But we create safe places for these people to go after the bars. We're giving them free water. We're giving them, uh, we're helping them get Ubers every weekend. And they're not hammered drunk because of us. We're out here just trying to create a safe place and make this city better. We've been, you know, and, and uh, we've been in Travel and Leisure Magazine, Reasons to Discover America. Uh, we just signed up with NASCAR. So we're bringing attention and money to Charleston. Uh, we, we signed up, we have goal, we sell Golaguchi tours on our trucks.
You could, you could just finish your thought if you like, sir.
Absolutely, I, I retired, uh, before I started this business, I worked over in Afghanistan, Iraq for eight years contracting. Before the Army, I was injured. I made this business for my daughters and to put people to work. And we put over two hundred and fifty people to work since I've opened this.
Great.
And uh, and this was going to cause about thirty jobs to be lost if it passes.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
Godfrey?
Thank you. Oh, man, Charleston, a powerful city. We need some help. I'm asking, you know, to vote no on this. Uh, I've been trying to get help in, in this city with tourism. I'm a small black owned tourism company. I've been trying to sell my tickets, you know, around the city's real small business. And this was the only company that helped me to sell my tickets other than, you know, on my own. I'm just asking for you guys to really look at the situation. It's a really good business. It really is, it truly is. And you guys are some of the most powerful people. You can do anything you want. I'm just saying, take a look at this and, and we need some help. And I know you can help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council. Uh, my name is Mary Willis. I am an attorney in Mount Pleasant and I represent Woodrow Norris and Booze Pops. Um, in addition to that, he's also been a longtime friend of mine. Um, I have looked over this ordinance and um, done some independent research on whether or not it's act, it is actually, actually constitutional. Um, and I think there are certainly some constitutional challenges under both the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendment um, to restrict uh, my client from operating on his private property. Um, y'all may not know this, but uh, Booze Pops operates uh, at four different locations on private property downtown. He is in an area that is so condensed with restaurants that there is no conceivable way that he could get consent from every restaurant owner. He would be required to obtain ongoing consent from over a hundred restaurants at any given time. Um, in addition to that hurdle, which, you know, potentially could be overcome, but probably not, considering the restaurant owner can deny for any reason or no reason. Uh, but in addition to that. Just going to finish my thought. In addition to that, um, the purpose, as stated in this ordinance, is to um, address some of the social upheaval and the need to manage crowds um, after hours downtown. A two hundred and fifty foot rule has no bearing to whether or not um, the city is able to get some of the uh, violence and upheaval under control after hours. So we would ask that you uh, say no to this amendment. Um, and I'm, I'm available and happy to discuss uh, if anyone would like to talk further. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Claire Goodwin, Arthur Lawrence, Paige Collins, and Mohammed Idris.
Good evening, Mayor and the council. My name is Claire Goodwin. My name is Claire Goodwin. I'm an attorney. Uh, we represent Booze Pop Corporate and their franchises. Um, I'm just here to reiterate what you just heard. I just don't think this amendment is really going after the issue um, that you have before you. Um, specifically in regards to section seventeen dash um, one twenty-one B. You know, our client is there to he, to help the public when they need to. Um, they are not serving people that are intoxicated. They are providing free water, as my client said. Um, and moreover, they have somebody there that is um, sober the entire time. They're not drinking off the truck. And they're in these private parking lots, um, trying to run a business. I think that this would be detrimental to their business. Um, and we would really um, hope that you would reconsider, um, at the very minimum, um, you know, the parameters that are there currently. So, thank you, I'm also available to speak to anybody.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Arthur Lawrence. And uh, we have a wonderful police department. But the police department can't solve all our problems. What we created. Now, ordinance coming up with a sixteen year old and under. Don't put the police department to handle that. Because if they stop one individual, we're going to have a problem if that individual is seventeen or eighteen year old. You're creating problem for the city, for the police department. I just met with, with the, some of the officers about two hours ago on Always Street about the substation supposed to be created back there three or two years ago. We keep getting pushback, pushback on that substation. We need the substation. In that particular area, it's a chaos. Our community is being overlooked for King Street.
Time.
It's a shame the way how All, Always Street look with those trash containers, garbage on the street. Code enforcement need to step up. And these stores that don't do anything but hurt our kids. The people from Housing Authority were there today. And all these kids coming off of, off of Gas and Green on this, on the other side of the street, creating problem. The police have a difficult job in the city. But we as a community have to take responsibility for our kids. You need to hold the parents accountable, not these kids.
Thank you, sir.
Paige Collins?
Good evening, um, I'm Paige and this is Harrison. Uh, we live at um, Creek Point and I'm here representing many of the Creek Point residents. And we wanted to address the, the drainage ditches that have um, been put into our yards. Um, basically the bell is rung. We have these huge ditches in our yards. Uh, people are going to tell you that we don't have flooding here. I looked in the um, the study that gave the thirty basins and our sub-basin has not had flooding in forty years. So I just want to make that clear. Um, even within the report that this work was based on. Um, but here we are, our money has been wasted. Our money has been wasted to dig trenches in our yards. And our children are, have already been falling in these ditches. Um, they are so deep in some cases that small children could drown in them and we wouldn't even see them in there. Um, what we are asking for is for the pipes and the soil to be returned. Or if there's no pipes, if you guys don't want to pay for that, pay us our money back that's been wasted by putting the soil in there. Um, we also want to be relieved of liability. If it's so safe, then why can't you guys be liable? Um, it's not fair that the liability is on us with these massive ditches that are unsafe. First responders can't make it into our homes if we have cars in our parking lots right now, or driveways right now. Um, so we, our main priorities are relieve us of the liability and return the soil. And go look back at that plan and analyze the data. Don't just say there's twenty-eight work orders here. This is the worst place. Look at the communities that are in there and see which ones are the real problem and put our money there. So that way we are taking care of the people that need it. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, young man. Which, which neighborhood was that?
Creek Point.
Thank you.
Creek Point.
Thank you.
Mohammed Idris.
Evening.
Good evening.
Racism, racism is dead. It was executed in nineteen seventy-five. I'm here this evening because I'm displeased of the office of diversity. Here we set up an office dealing with diversity. And you have a man, an African American, who come to all city council meeting for the last twenty-seven years. And you don't invite him to be a part of that committee of diversity. We need not to continue to talk about racism and bad, the police department, because that's not our problem. Our problem is greed, jealousy, envy, and ignorance. And we elected you official to serve us.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, and if everyone could queue up, Ed Buckley, Gary Carasso, John Franklin, and Jean Casa.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Tauchlinberg, distinguished members of council. I am also a resident of Creek Point. We all learn from our mistakes. What you're doing in Creek Point is a huge mistake. We have never had a flooding problem in Creek Point. There are people here with me, behind me today, who have lived in that neighborhood for over forty years. They've seen the thousand year flood. They've seen Hurricane Hugo, Hurricanes Matthew, and uh, many, many heavy rains and have never had a problem. And the city of Charleston has come into our neighborhood and dug ditches in many places up to here. Right through the yards. And you have not solved any problem, you have created one. Stop. Rethink it. Everything can be repaired. We had a wall on the southern border of the United States that was well underway, that stopped when people realized it was wrong. We had a pipeline when certain people realized it was wrong. Stop right now so that you don't diminish the value of our properties. I doubt very seriously, when you get to Rebellion Road, Chadwick, uh, Formosa Drive, and Broughton Road and the Crescent, that you're going to do this through Gedney House Yard. You're not going to do that. You shouldn't do it to mine.
Thank you, sir. Well, I, I know everyone's in agreement with Mr. Buckley's statement. I do ask y'all refrain from uh, uh, outbursts like that. I'll, I'll take a, show of hands, everyone that just agreed with what he said. Please show me, raise your hand. God bless you, thank you. Next.
Gary Carasso?
If you agree.
Again, all right.
My name is Gary Casa. Excuse me if it wasn't quite written very legibly. Uh, I am here because I also live in Creek Point. And I have been there for over thirty years. And I've raised my three sons there. And we have never had any flooding in that area. There's never been any standing water on the streets. Even in the worst of situations, we are always free to come and go as we please in our motor vehicles. There is never any deep water, any place. And I know that this is possible because on James Island, we have special soil. It's a sandy soil. And it drains quickly, but yet it supports life. And that soil was taken from our easement approximately four times the amount of cubic yards that it would have taken to put in pipe. And not only that, if we do decide to approach placing in pipe, it's going to cost us more than it would have been if the soil was there to begin with. Even if the people say, well, we'll give you soil, they won't be giving us back the same sandy soil that is likened to Charleston's James Island, a barrier island. And we need that work stopped so that no more of the valuable, irreplaceable James Island soil is removed.
Thank you, sir.
John Franklin?
If you agree, please raise your hand. All right, yes, sir.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. John Franklin, a hospice palliative medicine and geriatric physician at the Charleston VA Medical Center and a resident of Creek Point. Some of you, the mayor and, and councilperson Jackson have seen what we're talking about. I'm five foot eleven.
Sir, we need to, you need to speak into the mic so we can hear you.
Five foot eleven and standing into that ditch is up to my thighs. Um, I've read the uh, I've read the um, stormwater management report for James Island drainage study from Thomas and Hutton, very comprehensive. Uh, with one exception. This is the uh, sign that James Island, that the, the city has put up. And it says, with improved drainage, we can improve the quality of life of our citizens and the water quality of our local waterways. You're certainly not going to improve our quality of life. My question to you is, where is the environmental impact study?
Time.
Just going to read you a warning on, it's on every chemical I use in my yard. Pesticide, fertilizer, insecticide, rodenticide. To protect the environment, do not allow pesticide to enter runoff into storm drains, drainage ditches, gutters. Applying this per, so here's another one for seven. This product is extremely toxic to aquatic invertebrates.
Please wrap up.
Do not apply, do not, so, all this stuff, our chemicals going into this drainage ditch, into the James Island Creek, right in my backyard. Where, my question to you is, has an environmental impact study been done?
Thank you, sir. You agree, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Jean Casa?
I've lived in Creek Point for thirty-three years. And um, at first we thought the, you know, we weren't alarmed by the notices on our doors that, that were, they were going to do drainage ditches. So we thought we'd have a nice little uniform ditch. But instead, the city brought their bulldozers out there and gouged out these ugly, ragged, jagged trenches. And they weren't standard, there were not standard width or depth. I've got a, a six foot trench in, behind my mailbox. And that is the widest depth. It goes to a depth of uh, let's see, from, to a four feet, I mean, a width from six feet to four feet. The depth goes from two and a half feet to fourteen and a half inches. The city carried away thousands of cubic yards of topsoil, sand, and dirt, which are the most natural impediment to flooding, and left us with deep and dangerous pits that will quickly fill in with mud exposed by the careless digging. Our property has been defaced, devalued, and destabilized. According to the South Carolina DHEC regulations and standards of stormwater management and sediment, the land disturbing activity is defined by use of land by any entity that results in the change of the. by any entity that results in the change of the natural cover of topography that may cause erosion and contribute to the quantity, quantity and quality of stormwater runoff. So the city's drainage ditches are not stormwater
Time.
management, they are land disturbing activities.
Thank you.
Please restore our property.
Thank you. Raise your hand if you agree. Thank you. Next.
Joseph Matthews, Seth and Lisa Ryan, Alice Menegakis, and apologies if I mispronounce that.
Coach, how you doing?
Good evening. I'm here today because I was, I coach at Westchester Park, doing, coaching for forty-one years. One thing I enjoy doing what I do. One of the things that, when we come to y'all and ask y'all for help, and we don't get help, it really hurts, you know? It bothers me because we got a lot of kids that goes out every year, come out here and compete, to try to be the best they can be. We losing a lot of our kids to the streets. A lot of these kids go, they breaking people's cars, they breaking homes, they do things because they don't have anything to do. We act for a gym. We act for a gym because we really need a gym because if we get a gym, we can take all these kids off the street and put them in something where they could be, they can have something to do. I've came, I've talked to several city council members, and it bothered me and it stirred me that there are some that have really helped me, I mean, really helped me, and there are some that who didn't help me. But right now, I'm at the point where we need help. We trying to give these kids something to do. And we, we got W. Gretchen Megget right there. A gym that can be leased, can probably be leased, to have, where we can have something to do. When it rains, these kids don't have nowhere to go. When it cold, they have nowhere to go. We need something for these kids. And I'm coming to y'all and asking y'all for help. And I feel like we're dealing with our babies, these are kids that don't have anywhere to go. And when these kids go out there and get in trouble, then everybody want to say, "Well, where's this person, where's that person?" I'm coming to y'all now. Because I'm tired of seeing on Jay and Rod, and all I see is kids being killed. It's happening all over now. We need your help. And all I'm asking for, we asking for, I mean, if we can lease a gym, where we can have to put these kids in. And that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. We do that, please raise your hand.
Seth and Lisa.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's good to see you all. May I present someone with the affidavits from Creek Point neighbors?
Certainly.
We've all come in solidarity. These are affidavits from members who have lived there for some, as others have set up to forty years, attesting to the lack of flooding, the lack of stormwater damage in our neighborhood. We are all very much against the current ditch process. But what I would like to speak about, because we have talked about several of the aspects from the environmental, to the safety, to the general concerns, I would like to also mention, because we're all homeowners, the property value, the aesthetics. Charleston is a beautiful city, the most beautiful city in the world, and we love living here. What is happening in our neighborhood is not beautiful, and we deserve better than what we are seeing. The ditches, as were mentioned, are un-uniform. They are ragged, they're cut-throughs in yards, they're tearing out here thousands of dollars' worth of irrigation that has been there, and I understand that there was, you know,
Time.
Basically, it's destroying our yards, it's destroying everything that is there. We deserve a better option, a more aesthetically pleasing option, because curb appeal is the number one thing that people see when they look at properties and the property value, and it has ruined our curb appeal.
Thank you, sir. And I'll let the record show that he handed in twenty-five individual slips of citizens, each saying that they have never had a stormwater flooding issue in their yard. One more, twenty-six. Two more. Oh, there's one.
Come on.
Alice.
Thank you, it's Ally Menegakis.
Ally, sorry about that.
That's fine, you got the last name perfectly. Mayor, council members, staff, my name is Ally Menegakis. I'm an attorney, I'm a criminal defense attorney. I practice in Florida and Charleston. I'm also the founder and executive director of South Carolina for Criminal Justice Reform, and I'm also the chair of the City Ordinance Committee for the City of Charleston Special Commission on Equity, Inclusion, and Racial Conciliation. I understand that there's an ordinance, curfew, juvenile curfew violation ordinance is being proposed. We have not, as the ordinance committee, been consulted regarding this ordinance. We would at least like to talk about the problems that we see. I've reviewed it, our teams reviewed it at SC for CJR. We believe there's arguably some constitutional challenges to it. But aside from that, from the appearance of this, this ordinance, I think that it can have grave disparate impacts, especially on people of color and children of color. This is the one-year anniversary of George, of the death of George Floyd, and the reaction so far to isolated, excuse me, we're curious what research has been done to suggest that such a curfew would actually have any effect whatsoever on the alleged crime that juveniles are committed.
Time.
We just ask for research to be done and to be consulted, and an actual analysis be done on this issue before any ordinance is passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Sabrina Polites, Josh Dix, and I believe it is Carl Slimming, maybe, I'm not sure. And then Karen Mukinfuss.
Please proceed.
Good evening, I'm Sabrina Polites from Creek Point. By this point, clearly you all know how unhappy we are about this project. It was billed as a neighborhood improvement. It's been far from an improvement, and we are here to let the mayor and city council know that we are not happy, and we seek immediate action on your part as our island neighbors and representatives to remedy the situation. Why, safety's number one. You've already heard tales of kids falling into ditches. I have two neighbors within view of my home with limited mobility. One has small children. She can no longer cross her yard now to go care for her two young children because there's a huge ditch. We have been treated very poorly by the workers, and we have been made to look ridiculous by Mr. Fountain on local TV. This is absolutely, in fact, a catastrophic failure, one you all have signed off on, and one that we do and will hold you all accountable to fix. Thank you all. Any questions?
Thank you very much. All in, in agreement, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Josh Dix.
Sir.
Mayor, Mayor Members, Council, it's good to see everyone in person, finally. Just wanted to take a quick moment and say thank you for taking up the ordinance to look at the minimum parking requirements. As we look to reopen businesses, I think this is a great first step to getting folks back in the business district. I know revisiting and revising ordinances is not an easy task, so I just want to say thank you, and hopefully this goes through tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Carl.
Welcome.
Good evening, how y'all doing today?
Great.
Good, Councilman, Mayor. I'd like to thank y'all. And completing what Joe was talking about earlier. I'm a retired federal officer. Now I work with the program with, coaching with the kids and everything else. So we was trying to get the gym. So we hope that y'all, we can improve the gym that we can have, we expand the horizon. We can save one, we can save a million. You know, pointing to these young men, you know, being in correction for twenty-seven years, understand, it just take a word or two, just listen and be in there. So with this all said and done, I hope and pray that we can receive a gym, and we can continue to structure, develop better young man. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Karen. Karen Mukinfuss.
She had to leave.
So we'll move to our virtual speakers. Oh, Jay, okay, Jason, we had you on the, our virtual list.
It's an apparition.
Thank you all. It's good to see you all in person. Jason Crowley, Communities and Transportation Director with the Coastal Conservation League. I'm here to speak with regard to municipal improvement district that's being considered this evening for Johns Island. Conservation League thinks that this is a very positive move for Johns Island. It's something that the city has been talking about for many years, and we encourage that the city move forward with this. And our recommendation is that you work with the Johns Island Task Force, which is a coalition of different organizations and individuals on Johns Island, to, direct staff to work with them, to work on the boundaries of the municipal improvement district, as well as the prioritization of projects that could be funded with this, in particular, getting the Southern Pitchfork completed, as well as the network of parallel roads on either side of Maybank Highway Corridor, which comes out of the Johns Island Community Plan, and also the opportunity to address stormwater infrastructure and programming and building out the three parks that are, well, two current parks and one potential park that is right there in the Maybank Corridor. So we look forward to working with you all and supporting this as it moves forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And now we'll go to our virtual speakers. Dr. Herman Daniel, if you're on the line, if you could press star six.
My name is Herman Daniel. I have a stroke, which is hard for me to talk. My son Tony speaks for me. My children are important, and all the other children. They have the law to govern, to say that not the neighborhood, the barriers, where elected is close to, is not set seven. We're not intended to be permanent. I knew there was school in the neighborhood when I moved here, and did all the rest. All I've asked of you is please enforce the statute.
Were you able to understand him? Thank you, sir.
Tony Daniel. Tony Daniel. If you're on the line, if you could press star six. Miguel Torres, if you're on the line, if you could press star six.
Good evening, this is Tony Daniel. I've been pushing star six, so I hope I haven't missed my turn.
No, you can please proceed. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Ross Appel should be recused from any discussions of service regarding the roads in Country Club Number Two. I ask the other members of council, mayor, for help stopping this miscarriage of justice and cronyism. The traffic negatively impacts our street twenty-four seven and not just during school. Mr. Appel is engaged in prejudicial actions, false and defamatory statements about me in email discussions. Sorry, he thinks I have lost my mind, and he's had it with me. Mr. Appel solicited negative comments. Spread the word, and those comments from thirty-eight families called the roads closed. I doubt he did the same with Blessed Sacrament. Mr. Appel maintains the roads are not closed and incorrectly states they are barricaded with growing pine trees. The city has an undebatable, nondiscretionary duty to maintain and make open roads accessible. Digging up asphalt and planting trees is not city mandates. In the recent newspaper article, Mr. Appel said council was unlikely to vote to reopen the barricaded streets with so many residents opposed. Are they closed or are they open? And his statements do not follow Title VII. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Miguel Torres.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hello, how's everyone? I'm also following up with Dr. Daniels and Tony Daniel. I'm the neighbor that sits next door to them also. This school has, and traffic has become a problem. Mr. Appel basically should have followed the words that he said today, this morning, and become a better individual. Just for the simple reason, he still has not formally apologized for his unprofessional, unethical, and shameful behavior he exhibited against me at the city council meeting on April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, when he shooed me away as if I was insignificant. Ross Appel has divided Charleston Country Club Two. He has pitted neighbor against neighbor. He has made our streets unsafe and to travel during the school hours. And also, he has made it so difficult for anyone to become and be a part of a safe neighborhood. Ross Appel has a secret agenda, or a hidden agenda, with friends, with friends within the neighborhood. He needs to live up to his quote, as a, excuse me, as his, the pledge that he took as a lawyer and as a council member, and stop being such a small individual. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Greta Anderson, if you're on the line, if you could press star six. Greta Anderson. Marcus McDonald, if you're on the line, if you could press star six. Marcus McDonald. Tracy Owens, if you're on the line, if you could press star six. Tracy Owens. And it looks like we had two people who signed up online that also appeared in person. So those were all of the speakers that we had. We also received some comments online. One person left nine comments referencing the closure of roads on Frampton Street and Burning Tree Road. A video link submitted showed three driveways blocked for twenty-five minutes during the carpool pickup at Harborview Elementary School. One person left two comments saying that it was bad enough that the roads were illegally inaccessible and causing a traffic problem and other nuisances. One person said that a non-existent HOA should not have a vote or say so regarding illegal road closures. One person left three comments referencing South Carolina Code fifty-seven dash seventeen dash eighty. One person left three comments referencing the city's ordinance, section twenty-eight dash twenty-one, that required permits for disturbing surface of or opening streets or taking up sidewalk. One person said he filed a case with the U.S. Court of Appeals, now doctored within the Supreme Court of the U.S. regarding governing access to the internet and social media that citizen of low and moderate income families were not able to attend city council meetings via Zoom. One person supports the mobile vendors ordinance. One person said his Uber passengers were displeased to witness the display of Confederate flags at the Battery and said they could not support a city that allowed such an activity. Those were all the comments that we received.
All right, thank you, Madam Clark. And I want to thank all the citizens who came out tonight and expressed yourselves, particularly the citizens from Creek Point neighborhood. Thank y'all for coming and sharing with all of council your thoughts and feelings about the drainage project. I'll just tell you, our intentions are nothing but to help our city be protected from flooding. And I know, I heard you loud and clear, you've never had flooding in your neighborhood. We got the thirty signed documents here. I got that. But, but I just want to share with you, and we'll look at what we've done and what we can do to help ameliorate the situation in the future. But we had nothing but the best intentions. We plan to reinstate ditches all over our city that I forget how many hundreds of miles we have of them, and y'all have them in your neighborhood too, or had them, or they were designed that way. So I just want to tell you, I hear you loud and clear. We had nothing but, we have nothing but the best intentions because we want to protect our city and our citizens and their property from flooding. And that's, that's where this all came from. But we'll look at it. Appreciate it. This, I'm sorry, it's not a question and answer period. If you want to send us something else, please send me an email or call my office tomorrow. Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
I'm just saying, I try to respond to everyone who writes, so please write me.
Yep. All right. So next, we have our participations and communications. We have appointments to the Minority Women Business Enterprise Advisory Board. Any comments, questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Next, our health and Any opposed, the ayes have it. Next, our Health and Wellness Advisory Committee. New and
Move for approval.
All new appointments, and these are really dedicated healthcare professionals in our community. Any discussions, questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Next is a resolution expressing the intention to establish a Johns Island Municipal Improvement District, authorizing staff to prepare an improvement plan and other matters related to, I don't know if any staff member, Robert Summerfield is here, director, if you've never seen him in real person here, Robert is, and he might want to say a few comments and
Can we put a motion on that?
open the questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Robert, do you want to?
I just was here, in speaking to Councilman Brady earlier, I thought there might be some questions on what's next and what this resolution meant for the process, but if there's not.
Any questions for Mr. Summerfield?
May I be heard?
Councilmember Brady?
Yep, unless, less so of a question, but I just wanted, for the sake of the public and my colleagues on council, you know, one of the things that we've really been trying to, as Mr. Crowley mentioned in his comments during the participation period, and we've really been trying to, we know that people moving here are putting strains on the infrastructure. I don't think that's lost on anyone, but with tight budgets and having to prioritize projects, we really wanted to look at, how can we come up with creative ways to finance infrastructure improvements that will improve quality of life, not just for our citizens who currently live here, but for those that are moving here as well. And the mid, the municipal improvement district was kind of the mechanism that we had come up with in order to begin raising and bonding the necessary money to do that. But this resolution's the first piece of that, to get staff to really start looking into it and ironing out the details. So, you know, for the folks on Johns Island, this means good infrastructure improvements are coming, but we've just got to work out the process and work with the stakeholders to accomplish that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So Mr. Summerfield and his staff will continue to work on this mid idea and bring us back something more definitive. Next, I really don't have much of an update for you on COVID-19, and Tracy McKee is taking a well-deserved day off today, so she's not with us. She did want me to share with you that between vaccinations and individuals who have had COVID and hopefully have some immunity, that we are very close to 70% immunity and 70 in Charleston County. That's according to MUSC. That's not all shots. That's shots plus natural immunity. So y'all, we're knocking on the door of being a member of the herd here, and so we're really making progress. You've seen our case count over the last week. They've been in single digits a number of days for the whole county, which is excellent. I do want to let everyone know, it's still, if you haven't been vaccinated yet, we still highly recommend that everyone get vaccinated. We still have our partnership with MUSC with a COVID vaccination site at 180 Lockwood. It's open six days a week. There's no charge. You don't even need an appointment anymore. There's free parking, so come on out and get your vaccination if you hadn't gotten one yet. So next, we go to council communications. There wasn't anything on the agenda, but with the tragic events in the Middle East, and then I must sadly report from the news yesterday of the increase in incidence of anti-Semitic remarks and violence in this country over the last 10 days, Councilmember Appel asks that he be recognized and make a statement and maybe bring us back a resolution to consider. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my apologies to my colleagues. This kind of came together over the weekend, and we didn't have time to get this officially on the agenda and to you all, but, you know, obviously, anybody that's been paying attention to the news, both internationally and domestically, is well aware of what's been happening over in Israel, and also unfortunately, here in the United States and elsewhere, regarding the rise of antisemitism and its, and its, all of its forms. And I've been hearing a lot from our community, not just our Jewish community, but also our Christian community and other folks in the community that are very passionate about Israel, and they wanted to know where Charleston stood on this issue. And I took a crack at putting together some thoughts. If y'all would indulge me, I'd like to maybe read them this evening, and if it suits everybody's pleasure, I'd like to maybe bring this back to the floor in June for a more formal resolution we can get behind. And these might be famous last words, but I've done everything in my power to structure this in the most neutral, even-handed, positive, you know, way possible. So here it goes, without further ado. Whereas the city of Charleston, known to the world as the Holy City, has for centuries treasured religious tolerance, whereas the Charleston Jewish community traces its roots to 1695 and has played an important role in Charleston's history ever since, whereas both Jews and non-Jews in Charleston have a deep and abiding connection to the state of Israel, whereas the United States and Israel have long been close allies with strong bipartisan support, whereas the city of Charleston unequivocally rejects antisemitism and all other forms of racism, religious intolerance, and other prejudices, both here in Charleston and around the world, whereas the city of Charleston expresses strong support for Israel and its Jewish, Muslim, Christian, Druze, and other citizens, whereas the city of Charleston also supports a peaceful future for the Palestinian people living in the West Bank and Gaza. Therefore, now be it resolved, the city of Charleston, the Holy City, supports peace in the Holy Land, and of course, here in Charleston. So that's what I came up with, and maybe I'll bring this before everybody in June. We'll have a chance to look at it and talk about it.
Council
Thank you.
Councilmember Shade.
Mr. Mayor, I chatted with Councilmember Appel earlier, and he read that to me, and I'm ready to go ahead and pass this resolution tonight. I think it's well spoken enough.
I agree. I second.
It's on the agenda.
I understand. If we had to move to amend the agenda to include it, I'd still move it out to the agenda.
The only stipulation I'm going to ask, call on our council to advise council about the emergency nature of adding something to the agenda.
Yes, sir. So Councilmember Appel and I spoke or emailed a little bit earlier, and this is not on the agenda. It would require a two-thirds vote and a finding of an exigent or emergency circumstance that probably is not here. And so what the recommendation would be is to put it on the next agenda, and that would allow notice to the public and an opportunity for people to come out and support it and comment on it. As we know, adding things to the agenda is a very unusual situation, and so my recommendation was that he approached it this way, and he agreed. Thank you.
And that's, that's fine, Mr. Mayor. I think that as a council, we recognize this, and we'll go through the formal process next June at our meeting to do it properly and make sure that we're all, the public, an opportunity to comment on it. But I appreciate Councilman Appel doing this and bringing it to our attention, and it's something we all need to take recognition of.
Thank you. We will have it on our next agenda. Thank you very much. So next is our council committee report. First up, Councilmember Waring with Committee on Public Works and Utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had to collect my thoughts. I thought Councilmembers Appel, the words he put together so quickly, I hate to see if you really concentrate, because that was actually beautiful, the words you put together. So although it's not on the agenda today, I think it will benefit our community. As our council lady said, wise council lady said, have it on the agenda so all in the community will be able to read, digest, and pray over the words that you put down today. So thank you so much for what you've done. Our committee on public works met yesterday, and as you have seen on the agenda, all items passed unanimously, and I so move the adoption of
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it.
I do have part on an update that I think Councilmember Seekings would penalize me if I don't point out. There's a wonderful opportunity that you alluded to, Mr. Mayor, earlier, about to advance the project on low battery. Instead of being a five-phase project, reducing it down to, I'm sorry, four-phase project, reducing it down to five, reducing it down to four. Mr. Fountain just come to the microphone. We want a Cliff Note version of that, because if we were to put this in a barn, we could take advantage of low interest rates, keep down the inflationary cost of that repair, which is one of the best linear parks in America. If you haven't seen Phase One and looked at Phase Two, I invite you all to go take a look at it. So this could be a cost-saving mechanism that improves the quality of life for all of us. Mr. Fountain?
Just very briefly, Councilmember, as you mentioned, that the recommendation is to look at changing the project from five phases to four phases by basically lengthening the third phase, basically from Lime House to just before the King Street intersection. That would require taking basically the money that council has been setting aside for the last number of years from the accommodations and hospitality tax fees and taxes, and using that to basically bond off of those same revenue sources to be able to advance the construction. Since it is shovel-ready, it is ready to go. It is, it's not a typical situation where you're bonding for some future project. You're actually bonding from a cash flow perspective. You're ready to spend. We have been seeing in the area about a 10% per year increase in construction costs. So with the bond rates that we're seeing, there is the potential to actually reduce the overall cost of the project instead of having that extend out in the future. In addition to that, of course, it does prevent us from basically having gaps in time for the project where you have somewhat of a gap-tooth look of the Battery as you wait for the funding to come in to build those additional phases.
Thank you, Mr. Fountain.
All right. And that's it for that report. Any questions? Councilmember Seekings?
If I can, just very briefly, one of the things we did tonight at Ways and Means is we approved monies for the design of Phase Three. So are you going to go and make sure that design of Phase Three is extended a little bit further? So if we do go back and bond this off, that we'll have an extended project designed in advance?
So I think that was one of the things Councilmember Waring was alluding to in Public Works Utilities. We discussed that budget for Phase Three is for the 1,800 feet of an extended Phase Three project. And it also includes a little bit of preliminary work for the King Street intersection parklet, because that's, we assume that's going to be a two-year
Right.
design phase versus most of the wall, which will be very similar to what we've seen from the last phase. But yes, it does include that anticipation of a longer phase.
And if you haven't been down there, Mr. Mayor, they poured the first concrete last week and this week on the first 100 feet, and so they're moving. It looks great.
Sure.
So go take a look.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Down there yesterday, asking somebody else to help us find us some money. Thank you. Next up, back to Councilmember Seekings, our Committee on Traffic and Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Committee on Traffic and Transportation met yesterday at 1:00. We took up a few items, one of which I just want to take a minute to tell you all about, and that is, hold on a second here, let me get my notes. That is the park, the traffic and transportation, right-of-way permit fees discussion. And one of the things that y'all sitting here on this council may not realize, and it's been interesting to see it as it comes together through staff looking at it, is we have lots of people using our streets to do a lot of things, and we basically give that, those spaces away for, if not for free, for very little. So I just, I love metrics. I think y'all need to hear this. This is in 2019. In 2019, the city issued 979 street blocking permits. 979. Okay, punchline. How much revenue did we get from the 979 street blocking permits? That'd be zero. We got nothing, nothing. We gave, we had 518 dumpster permits, which as you know, dumpsters generally, if they're downtown, are where meters are. So we did get a little revenue from that, about $118,000, against probably a value of triple or four times that. Meter bag permits, we gave out 499 meter bag permits, but this is great, representing 2,229 parking spaces. Y'all know how many parking meters we have in the city of Charleston? Who knows that? 1,702, plus or minus. We gave away 2,229 spaces, and by the way, it's hard to go back and figure out how many days that represents. That's just spaces and not days. The total revenue that collected from that was $239,000. I suspect if we went back and recreated the days, the spaces and all that, it would be vastly significantly greater than the $239. We had 239 construction park, 239 construction parking permits issued, 159 moving permits, and we did actually collect a few late fees. But when it's all said and done, we issued 2,243 various and sundry permits to block our streets. This is not, by the way, including sidewalks, which I see Mr. O'Brien here, is a whole separate conversation, which we'll have before the end of the year. And our total revenue was about $379,000. So ladies and gentlemen of City Council, we need to fix that, and I think we will. Ms. McKee, who's not here tonight, has really worked hard with her staff of coming up with a process. There is some thought that we are limited by state statute and how we can charge for the use of our streets and sidewalks. They have to be user fees that are based on some rational basis of our cost. Now, we're going to look at that. I know Councilmember Appel has a little bit different view, and we're going to talk about it, and we will. But for now, anyway, the formula that is being used goes back and tries to recreate staff time that it takes to not only issue all those crazy permits we did, but to go out and inspect the projects that are ongoing while these permits are outstanding and the streets are closed, in some instances for years. And the mayor put up the example of Cumberland Street during our committee meeting yesterday. If you all might recall, they've just finished a project called the Saint Hotel on Cumberland Street. Cumberland Street was effectively closed from East Bay back to, was that Washington Concord Street back there? Some days it was closed, and we didn't even know about it. It was an unpermitted and unpaid-for closure. And right, various, and it was unsightly. So they've come up with a formula that shows about what in 2019, based on those numbers that I just told you, the estimated lost revenue. The estimated lost revenue, if we base it on time and inspection time and without limiting ourselves and really coming up with some fees, totals about $4.9 million in lost revenue. Now, for those of you who are the budgeteers that we are up here, that all equates to about four and a half mils of property taxes, something near and dear to all of our hearts. So there's a real issue out there, and for those of you who want to be using our streets for free, I think those days are about to end. This is regrettably, but I think appropriately for tonight, for information purposes only. I think you now have some information that I hope will lead you to the same thought that our committee had, which was to ask Ms. McKee and her staff to come back with us with an ordinance so we can adopt some of the things that we need to do to be able to charge fees to be using our streets. Footnote one, we also have to look at sidewalks, which is a whole different issue through the engineering department. And I understand there are some people, and I may be one of them, that thinks that there are some issues with us limiting ourselves to time and expense for issuing the permits and inspecting based on the state statute. But of course, we'll look at that, and we'll try to make sure that we reasonably maximize the revenues that we can collect for closing our streets, and that ultimately will be to the benefit of every single taxpayer in the city of Charleston. So I took more time than I wanted to, but I thought it was interesting. I will have this sent to all of you, this PowerPoint presentation, so you can see these numbers. Great talk, now that we're out there in public. As you're out there banging on doors or going to cocktail parties, you let people know about this. I think we'll have great support for doing something to fix it, right? So that was essentially what we talked about most of the time yesterday. We also had, for information purposes only, the Parking Dispatch and County 911 Center MOA, which came through Ways and Means. Mr. Benjamin gave an update. I know that he's out there virtually. I don't know if he wants to add anything. The update was nothing really major, other than one of the things that is on the radar is the repaving, perhaps of the entire length of Rutledge Avenue and Boulevard in 2023. For those of you who's the district transects, and that's a good number of us, might want to put that on your radar, because it probably is an opportunity to reconfigure Rutledge Avenue before they go lay down about five miles of tarmac. So with that, Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmembers, I will cede the floor. That is my report. There's no action needed by this council, and I will make sure that you get this presentation with all these numbers.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments for?
And thank you, by the way, to fellow members of the Traffic and Transportation Committee who attentively listened to this and enthusiastically asked that we bring this back to council for some revenue enhancement.
Councilmember Waring.
I think that's, that's the best T and T report I've heard.
Well, I've had a year and a half to practice, so.
Well, let me ask you, you know, we're going to be getting together, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chairman for, I don't know whether it's mid-year budget adjustments. We have to get together for this COVID money. Is there any way we get together for, let's determine mid-year budget adjustments, that some of this information can be brought forward, and we could, that would be part of those potential adjustments for fiscal year '21?
If we pass the ordinance, we probably need three readings. It wouldn't go in effect until the latter part of this year.
That's okay.
I'm happy to consider it. I know that our CFO often doesn't like to count on anticipated revenue. She likes to have the money in the bank, but She likes to have the money in the bank, but we're, I'm happy to, let's have a discussion about it.
It'd be great to put it in the queue. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Pell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilman Seaking, we received a letter yesterday from the Charleston County School District regarding the Country Club Two issue. And I spoke with Mr. Benjamin, and he had maybe a few minutes just to give a brief update, if that's okay with everybody. I know this has been a recurring issue, and I think it would be good for the public and for council to hear that the city has been very active and engaged on this issue. And it's not some, like a lot of things traffic and transportation-related, it's not all up to us, and there's certain things that are outside of our hands. So if Mr. Benjamin is available to make a few remarks.
With the pleasure of council, that would be fine, Mr. Benjamin?
Thank you all.
Good evening, everybody. Let me know if you all can hear me properly. So I'll just be really quick. We have maintained our relationships with SEDOT, the Harborview Elementary School, neighborhood leadership, and also our city partners with public service and legal regarding that very area. Some months ago, we met with the school and the school district regarding the traffic control plan that's been in place for some time. Last week, we spoke with the Executive Director of Transportation for the school district, as well as with Jeffrey Barway, who's the Chief Operating Officer, who sent a letter that I sent to a number of councilmembers. I can send it to all if necessary, but send it to the TNT Committee, and then also the Chair of Public Works and to Councilmember Pell. They have been doing their due diligence in the midst of COVID as they are trying to make sure their school is safe with their pickup and drop-offs. They've also made their school resource officers available for enforcement on the street as necessary. They said, just call us and we'll make it happen. But one of the other pieces that they wanted to stress in the lettering that they offered was their trepidation about placing stopping, standing, prohibiting signs along streets that they currently use for their traffic control plan. To do that would essentially make their pickup and drop-off illegal and nullify their traffic control plan. And so per their letter, they asked that we support them in their traffic control plan and their efforts that they're making to work with adjacent neighbors and otherwise on their design of their on-campus vehicle stacking space, as well as their capacity to move vehicles throughout. So just wanted to make it clear that we have been doing our due diligence throughout, and we have the full support of the school district as well as the State DOT.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pell, you want to add anything else?
Just wanted to really thank Mr. Benjamin. He's been on this from day one. As soon as I first started to receive some complaints about this issue, he's been nonstop in his diligence and advocacy on behalf of everybody in the neighborhood. And I just want to personally thank him for that. And thank you for the opportunity to kind of put some of this information out in the public so that we could all be on the same page. Thank you all.
Absolutely. And I'm not sure if Mr. Benjamin mentioned, but I saw the letter, and they also will attempt to queue more of the cars on the school property, which would be helpful as well. So we're working on it. Next is our Committee on Public Safety, Councilmember Shade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. By the way, Madam Clark, I do like our new microphones. I notice when we're talking, our names pop up on these screens. So this is really sophisticated. Yeah, this is pretty cool.
We know who you are.
Yeah. Pick you out, everybody has their own name on here, so we know, we can't hijack or someone else's microphone. The Committee on Public Safety met Friday afternoon at 2:00. I will not mention to you where I was during this committee meeting. We had two ordinances that we needed to address and discuss. The first ordinance was to address this mobile food truck. We've had different names for this, these street vendors that we were discussing. But the intent was to address these food trucks or mobile vending operations on King Street to address some of the unrest that we've experienced over the past several weeks. We made several changes to the original proposed ordinance, and you should have received an email that outlined the four changes. The committee recommended approval of these four amendments. The very first one is to B1D to read, no mobile food vendor may operate outside the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 1:30 a.m. So we had pushed that back to 1:30 a.m. And they also made that consistent change of time in the sentence above from 1:30 a.m. to 1:00. So we had like an amendment within an amendment. Altered the definition of mobile food vendor vehicle definition to include non-motorized carts, because there were some instances in which they may not have been self-propelling. And amended section B1A to change 250 feet to 100 feet and remove the reference of the word truck. So as amended, this ordinance was proposed unanimously of Chief Reynolds, who's present. Supported unanimously. I'm sorry. So proposed unanimously to have this brought before council, and we bring it to your attention. And Chief Reynolds, if you want to make any comments about the purpose of this ordinance and the impact it may have on parts of King Street.
Chief? For now, we're just talking about the?
The food, the food truck, yes.
So I can talk a little later, maybe more about the problems overall in general. But yes, I believe that the vendor ordinance, as well as just in general, the goal being to shut down King Street earlier and uniformly so that we don't have businesses open up till 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning that are actually attracting people to stay there, that really have no business there. And we've experienced a lot of problems related to that. And so we really need to work hard on a whole variety of things. We've done some things that are, I think, helping significantly, and this is just a step of many others to get us to a better place.
And just to echo that, this is one of many changes we've been addressing to, on King Street, along with the other things that the mayor has instituted with the one-way traffic and parking along the lines. So, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend to council that we adopt this amended ordinance, as amended, as I read into the record, and I would so move.
We have the motions. Do we have a second? We have a second. So would anyone like to be heard or have a question? Councilmember Sacram?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it'd be helpful, just for some context for folks listening, will this change any of the licensing requirements for vendors on King Street? Reduce the number of potential spots for them to be serving?
My understanding, it does not change any licensing requirements. And contrary to comment made earlier, folks can still do business. They just can't do it till 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. They'll have to shut down at 1:30, so that when the bars and restaurants also have final closing at 2:00, we're hopeful that folks will go home, and that that will be the end of the evening.
And then one additional question, the change from 250 feet to 100 feet, what was the rationale for even including something like that in the ordinance?
Well, the reduction was to make it a little less restrictive, if you will, but to not have a food vendor literally just a door away in close proximity to a competing restaurant or a food service provider.
How does that address any safety issues, though? I mean, how does that, how does that address any safety issues? Are we just minimizing the potential competition between two vendors? I mean, that, I personally feel like the vendors actually add a benefit to King Street. Many folks don't have the ability to purchase a lease and open a restaurant. So for safety reasons, I get the, I get the time difference, but having a vendor next to another restaurant, I don't quite understand how that addresses any safety issues.
Thank you. Councilmember Griffin and then Shade.
Yes, sir, thank you. I called Chief Reynolds today, and we had a very pleasant, long conversation about what the future of King Street looks like. And, you know, I, in a lot of ways, I'm glad that we have a plan. However, I didn't find out about it until today, about a couple hours ago, what our plan is. I had no idea that we were looking to reduce all of King Street back to 1:00 a.m. And I'm guessing more or less this is the first step in that, in that case of doing that. But what kind of message are we sending if we're going to let people sell liquor later than we let them sell food? I know that a lot of you probably don't patronize King Street late at night, and I try not to as much anymore either, because I'm getting older. But there is a value added when you walk out of a bar, and you've had a few drinks, and you're waiting on your public transportation or your Uber, your private transportation that could be 45 minutes to an hour right now due to this shortage of drivers. What are you going to do? Are you supposed to just plop down on King Street drunk and just sit there for an hour? Or can you go to a well-lit, safe place, get some food to sober up a little bit, and go get home safely? If I was a 21- or 22-year-old girl, you know, I would want to go to a well-lit, safe area, which is what these vendors are, and get some food in my stomach or get free water. I've heard from several vendors, I called a lot of them. They all offer free water, and a lot of them are small minority-owned businesses that I really appreciate in a lot of ways. I think we're doing a disservice to those vendors by saying, hey, look, if you own a big store, you are more important than this local small-business vendor. Because you're competing with them, you're no longer allowed to be in this space near them. I don't know if y'all have seen some of the alleyways or the walkways where some of these vendors set up. They're very, very poorly lit, very poorly lit. And they would be very, very dangerous alleyways where, you know, illegal activity could go on, somebody could pull a gun on somebody. So I almost wonder whether or not we're being counterproductive by taking away these street vendors. And ultimately, like I said from the beginning, what kind of message are we sending? That we're saying, hey, the bar that's serving liquor, drinks, and shots, you can stay open later than the guy who's making a Philly cheesesteak on the street. That, to me, is reactionary. And if we're going to go in a direction where we want to change King Street for, this is not an emergency ordinance, this is an ordinance that would be in place for forever unless another council decides to change it. If we're going to make wholesale changes like this, why are we doing it? Sort of bring it up to a committee on a Friday and pass it on a Tuesday and move on to the next. This is a very, very, very important issue. And I understand that there's going to be a meeting with some of the business owners coming up this week. I'd like to hear what their feedback is before we move forward with this. So ultimately, it's a no for me tonight. I agree that we have to make some wholesale changes because our, everybody that visits this city and every one of our citizens should be able to go down to King Street and patronize it safely. We should not have people there all night long. This is not Bourbon Street. But ultimately, telling the food vendors to pack up before the bars, to me, is backwards. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Shade?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And then the agenda for this meeting was well-published before today. We met on Friday, so this information was available, everybody, prior to Friday as to what we were proposing. We're not shutting down mobile vendors. And I think that the misconception of this is that we're shutting down or sending these people on their way is an inaccurate description. What we're trying to do is, you're right, we're trying to change the atmosphere on King Street. The atmosphere on King Street has changed. And I grew up on King Street, and I lived, my family was born on King Street. So I'm very familiar with this part of King Street, and I understand the dynamics of this. And what we have down there is a toxic environment. And the chief warned us about this early on, beginning of the year. That's what was taking place with young people and with young, and gangs being formed in the area. We have a problem with things that are attracting people to stay downtown. And so we want to change the environment of King Street. We want it to remain a wholesome place where folks come and have a good time, patronize the restaurants, patronize the businesses that are down there, patronize the other enterprises. That's the whole idea behind this. But we're also trying to come up with a major plan of addressing what has been sort of the root problem as to the violence that we've experienced over the past several weeks. This is one step towards that. This is going to be a first reading of this ordinance. It's not an emergency ordinance, it's a first reading. We can have folks come back in our June meeting to talk about this, offer input and other suggestions on how to address this. But if we want to make sure that King Street remains a safe place that is welcome to all people, this is an opportunity to start addressing that particular point. It was not long ago in which a select committee was formed, before I was on council, addressing some of these exact same issues, and some important measures were taken, and it had an impact, and to avoid it looking like Key West or Bourbon Street on New Orleans. We don't want that. That's not the environment that we want. Hopefully, this will be a first step, along with the other things that we have taken up to address this. And I just want to reemphasize, we're not shutting these vendors down. We're just making some adjustments to the hours of operation and making sure that we are sensitive to them being able to operate. That's what sort of some of the reasons for the changes on the 100 feet to 200 feet, that we allow them to operate, but not be restrictive, and to continue some of the practices that they're having. So I would urge council to vote for this, get this through first reading. If we need to make some other adjustments to it, we've got between now and in June to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I would like to just add at this point, if I may, that the one vendor we, and I look forward to hearing from the other vendors now that if we give this first reading tonight, they'll be able to come forward. The one vendor we heard from tonight has four locations, and they get their name from booze, booze pops. And so he's not a food vendor, and although he might offer a free drink of water to someone, he's selling a food product that has alcohol in it. And unfortunately, our state law with the Alcoholics Beverage Commission does not regulate food products that contain alcohol. So even though the bars have to close and quit selling liquor and beer and wine, he can still sell booze pops laced with alcohol, and it's like, you know, folks going out to get another drink after the bar's closed. So respectfully, I think this is a step in the right direction. It may need some tweaking, and I do look forward to hearing from the other food vendors, and some accommodation might need to be made for them, both in the distance and the time. But the real purpose is to try to avoid a continuance of a party atmosphere well past when the regular businesses have to close. And, you know, our mama said after midnight, and this is after 2:00, you know, it's time to go home. Councilmember Waring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's some merit, what's all been said, certainly what you just said, it's now, Mr. Mayor. But when we, as the chairman said, we're trying to come up with a major plan. And you don't come up with a major plan, meeting on a Friday and having it on the agenda Tuesday, with all due respect. The information that the Public Safety Committee had, certainly presentation during its Zoom meeting, committee meetings, all, the entirety of council on this particular issue affecting probably one of the most major districts in the entire city of Charleston, we should make those decisions based on thorough information being applied to all 12 of us, certainly the mayor being the 13th member of council. So I would ask respectfully that we defer this item, because we should have, I'm not fully informed, the vote on this one, Mr. Mayor. The piece about, what did you just say, it's now, I think, again, merit. There's something that Councilman Pell has been saying for almost his entirety on council. Many of our issues lie in our zoning. Many of our solutions lie in zoning. And I think this is one, too, that can find solutions if zoning is properly applied. You know, one of the things that our entertainment, if we want to call it the entertainment district, it has expanded beyond the capabilities of our zoning. And I would say that there are places now where there are bars that used to be paint and body shops. But the paint and body shop would close at six or six thirty. Now the bar closes at two o'clock in close proximity to neighborhoods because that zoning was in effect grandfathered. Um, this is a little bit different, but we used to have a, uh, an adult bookstore on the corner, uh Sycamore and St. Andrews Boulevard. And that pr- uh provided literally havoc for the Ashleyville Neighborhood Association. With all kind of illicit activities going on. The city aimed to change that so much until it went all the way to the Supreme Court. And that neighborhood found success because of the city uh realizing that the wrong zoning was in place at the wrong time. I don't know that that was ever, it was used to be a grocery store, a red and white grocery store, and adult bookstore moved there and the zoning was grandfathered. So it took uh, I guess, the better part of ten years to get to the Supreme Court on that. But you ride by there now and you never know that that uh frankly, house of ill repute was ever there. I think with a little bit more study and due diligence on all of our behalf, certainly uh input from our, our chief to crystallize the problem that right now all of us don't know about, some of you do, but all of us don't know about, and I include myself in that. Um, that's why I respectfully ask that we defer this one right now. So we don't have a tug of war. When we come back on this one, we'll be fully informed. And hopefully we will vote collectively on a major change, as you said, Mr. Chain, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you on a major district in this uh city. So I move for deferral.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Gregory and then Mitchell.
Yeah, I'd like to second that emotion for non emotion. That motion for.
On the floor. Councilmember Mitchell.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I understand everyone, what, what my colleagues are saying. And I told the chief and uh, and you, Mr. Mayor, and part of the
A little closer.
Public ser- Public Safety Committee, that if we get into a big dialogue with this, we, I would have deferred until next, till next month, till next council meeting. So that everyone can be informed of what's going on, what's saying, so we wouldn't have to go through these things over and over and over again. So at, at this is the consensus, and I know we have a motion on the floor, consensus. I'll just move to uh have both deferred, both items, A and B deferred until next month. Give every, all the council members an opportunity to uh contact the chief or contact the mayor. Or if we have to have another meeting to even go over all these items that we are talking about or what we planning on doing. So we can make a fair judge decision and then we won't have to go through all the dialogues that we are going through now. And this could save a whole lot of time and don't put the wrong conception of what in the community they're looking at us and say, oh, this is what they're doing, this is what they're not doing. So I think this would be the best way and just deferred, I would make a motion if I can, I'll make an amendment motion that be deferred both, A and B.
Will, will you accept that amendment to your motion to defer?
Until, until next month. And in the meantime, let's get together and try to have a dialogue that we can iron this out and come back next month. Come back next month and iron this out and this have it completely uh taken care of.
All right, we have uh.
I second it.
We have a motion on the floor to defer both um of the ordinances, A three, A and B. Councilmember Appel, then Seekings.
Oh, there we go.
When you're done, if you would turn off your mic, I think that makes a difference.
Thank you, sir. Um. Listen, I'm, I'm all about going about this in a deliberate, smart, engaged manner. But I just want to remind everybody about what happened three weekends ago on King Street. Um, we had a very serious, dangerous situation unfold. We had young women stabbed. We had officers beaten by a crowd, by a out of control crowd. This is not some hypothetical thing that we're doing for no reason. Um, we avoided a very serious problem about three weekends ago that frankly has been brewing for a long time. And I'm very open minded to a series of steps we can take so that all of the brunt and all of that chaos is not thrown at the feet of our law enforcement. Because by the time it gets to that point, we've already failed. So if there are some smart, creative, fair, non discriminatory ways that we can get to that point, so we can lessen that burden from our officers who lord knows have had a heck of a year and a half. Um, I'm all for it, but I just wanted to make sure we sort of had the context here about why we're talking about these various issues. And, you know, I've, I've got a tremendous amount of respect for our chief. Um, when these issues are brought to us and these potential solutions are brought to the table, it's not coming from any place other than a genuine desire to come to a resolution here and to, and to avoid King Street from becoming a very dangerous and frankly scary place. Um, you know, my wife thankfully has allowed me to go on a few fact finding missions late at night, um Friday and Saturday night on Upper King Street. I've seen a lot of it firsthand myself. I'm telling you guys, um, it, it's wild out there. And we got to get it under control and I'm very open minded to it. I agree, we don't need to be rushing into things. Um, i- i- you know, we, we don't meet that much in the summer. First reading doesn't make anything a law. It does move the ball forward. We'll have a substantial amount of time between now and the next meeting in June to, you know, have as much outreach and coordination and thought process going. But guys, we may be, you know, in for a, a tough summer and we've all read the news about what's going on in North Charleston and what's going on frankly, all over the city and all over the world. It's a dangerous time right now. Crime is way up. And, you know, we're coming out of COVID nineteen. Um, look at what happened out on Kiowa and Ocean Course. I mean, tho- those guys got crazy at the end of that golf tournament. I mean, the, the society is kind of, I think, uh coming into a pretty, it's going to be an interesting summer is what I'm trying to say. So we need to, we need to be careful on this because things are, things are getting wild out there. That's all I got to say.
Councilmember Seekings and then Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I agree on the, the second part on the curfew that we should defer and talk about that. But on the food vendor issue, I'd like to speak to that, Mr. Mayor. Um, it is a zoning ordinance, but who's standing before us and asking for that? It's the police chief. And um with all due respect, everyone at this table, I don't think anybody who sits on this council has spent more time on King Street between ten and two o'clock in the morning in the last two months than me. I've been up there just about every night. And it is, Mr. Mayor, you described it as a party atmosphere. That is kind. It's way beyond that. Do you not agree with that, Chief? It is scary up there. You would not go up there alone if you did not know the police chief or other officers up there. It has gotten to that point and we need to do something. And if you go and ask the people who are on that team late at night, what they would wish for from this council, and the top three things they ask for is this food vendor ordinance, because the food vendors have been places of congregation until all god knows what time of the day and night and morning. And it has created incredible issues and problems. We have gone through a lot in the last year, a lot. And we've invested a lot in trying to bring back our economy on King Street. One of the things we asked the C V B to do was to go out there and take some of the storefronts and dress them up a little bit, right? Well, if y'all have been by Bluestein's lately, which is an empty storefront, what's going on there is a major investment from the C V B with an art installation. It's really cool. You know why it hasn't opened up yet? Although they've expended all the money, the artist has been there. You know why it hasn't opened up yet? Because there's not one, not two, but three bullet holes in the glass at Bluestein's today. Today, that didn't get shot in history, didn't get shot a year ago, got shot two weeks ago when they were installing the art, the detectives were there investigating at the same time. We have a problem up there and our police department is asking us to help them. Help them, control it, manage it. This is simply a management ordinance that we're putting first reading on. And if our police chief and our team that's up there every night who are in harms way, and I mean really in harms way up there, it's no kidding. Go up there and look at it. Don't go alone, by the way. Go up and look at it. And they're asking for this. We have an obligation to give it to them now, not later, not later. This didn't come out of nowhere. It's one of many things. If you've been up to King Street lately, we got one way traffic. We've taken parking way between the three and six hundred block, now the two hundred and six hundred block. It's getting calmer. The, the request for this is part and parcel of that. And by the way, one of the things that they are instituted is once everything shuts down at one thirty, you know what the first thing that shows up up there is? Street sweepers. Well, how do you want street sweepers blasting past outdoor food trucks? Hello? I mean, that, that makes no logical sense and in terms of public safety. So I would request all of you, don't defer this one. Give it first reading and if you've got questions about it, talk to that man in front of you or any of his deputies who are up there every single night. Last week, we had Charleston Police Department, we had the county, we had SLED, we had the National Guard on call. It's gotten to that point. It's not the future. It's not time for deliberate and smart. It's time for smart action based on what we've been asked to do. The craziness that's up there is not patient, okay? And it is, it is something that we have to address. So I agree, we need to study and do due diligence, but we also need to listen to the team that we employ to make us safe. And they're telling us right now, we're not safe and your eyes will tell that to you. So let's take a step forward and make it safe, okay? I'm going to vote against the deferral on the food truck ordinance or the food vendor ordinance. I do think that curfew is something we need to talk about some more, but please fellow councilmembers, give this police chief and his team what they've asked us for. It's important. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson and then Sacran.
I think.
And then Del Chapo.
Del Chapo.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I, I, I am compelled um by the last few speakers. Um, I'm obviously too old to go to King Street. Nobody would want me there at this point in my life. I wouldn't want to be there. So I, I am um benefited by the, those of you that are eyewitnesses to what's happening in a, in a season that, you know, we, we haven't predicted in the past. But I do think that, that I, I resonated with Councilmember Sacran's um suggestion that why, why are we trying to limit competition? I mean, if, if we're really just trying to make things safer late at night after the, after the restaurants and the, and the establishments are required to close, then I, I don't really understand the whole um uh reason for making food vendors, you know, have to get all this permission and not be a hundred feet away. So if, if we give it first reading right now, which I'm prepared to vote yes on that, um, then I really would like to drill down and understand better why we need to have any sort of, you know, distance um regulation to go along with this.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Councilmember Sacran, then Del Chapo.
I'm gonna, go ahead.
Del Chapo.
Thank you. Um, first, um, I'm gonna rub some of y'all the wrong way when you say you didn't have enough notice. When you say you didn't have enough notice about this. I spent my Friday evening watching the YouTube video of the public safety meeting because that's how important this is to me. I spent, uh, we spent what, an hour and a half yesterday? Chief, Deputy Chief Walker, Councilmember Mitchell, um, and some others going through about the curfew and exactly how you manage minors um and the implications of that. So to say that you have not been given proper notice when things are properly notified in accordance with FOIA, I'm going to call you out on that. You take the time for the things that matter. And this matters, it, it obviously mattered to me. I, we have, Councilmember Mitchell, Seekings, Shade and myself have sat in umpteen meetings over the past couple of weeks and spend hours and hours on these things. Because we represent these areas. We've spoken with the business owners. It's not haphazard that these things are coming forward. I agree, a curfew and when it comes to minors, and I would be remiss if I did not thank um Robert and Chief and Deputy Chief and the others for the conversation we had yesterday. When I saw that curfew, I, I, you know, my mind went into a million places that I don't want to get into right here. And it was so reassuring, the conversation we had. And that is what we all need to do more is to actually have conversations with each other and to pick up the phone and to set up a Zoom meeting or whatever needs to be done. These, these folks are nothing but at our disposal. And, and for that, I, I'm just forever grateful at the amount of time you all spend with the twelve of us and our crazy questions and requests and everything else. And, and that curfew was something that was so, it just weighed on me all weekend and made me almost unbearable all weekend. And so I, I appreciate a deferral on that. I'm okay with that. The food vendor, I think we need to go ahead and move forward with that. If, if a brick and mortar has to close down at a certain time, then, then a mobile one should too. They should all have to shut down at the same time. And to Councilman Seeking's point, what's the great benefit coming out of all this? Our streets are getting cleaned, which is something that the business owners and residents and everybody else has been begging for is for the street, the entire area to be cleaner. And now we're getting that. I'm not going to stand there, you know, chewing my Philly cheesesteak or whatever, and there's a big street sweeper coming by. Um, and it is dangerous. I have said to some folks, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go down there and see for myself in these wee hours what's happening. And I appreciate, I've been told it's no place for a lady to be at that hour. Please stay home, Marie. Um, and that's very, that's very sweet, but, you know, y'all are always looking out for my best interest. And so I'm, I'm okay if we want to work through the curfew more again, because we're, we're dealing with minors and that's a, that's an entirely different issue. And we had such great conversation about that and it was raw and it was honest and it was just incredible. The street vendors, they need to play by the same rules as everybody else.
Thank you so much. So uh, Councilmember Mitchell, did you want to be recognized briefly or Sacran? I saw Mitchell's hand up a long time ago. You haven't spoken on this matter? I thought you did. You, you just seconded the motion. Okay, Councilmember Gregory, hadn't spoken yet. Excuse my memory.
Uh, that's okay, Mayor. Um, you know, just sitting here listening. Um, if our entertainment district is that dangerous to public safety, sounds like we need to shut it down. Okay, I mean, sounds like we're playing at it, that what we're doing is we're going at symptoms. Okay, and we're not getting at the base of the problem. What changed? Was it the food trucks? I don't know. That start attracting the kind of element to our entertainment district that makes it unsafe. Makes it a place that we don't even want to go. And to me, if it's that serious, it does require much more thought. If we're talking about a curfew, okay, I think that needs a lot more thought. Because I think it's targeting. I think it's going to have a specific problem on certain populations. And I think it's going to backfire on us. And I think that we really need to be careful with regard to both of these. Cause I still say, folks, if it's that bad out there, then we've got to do much more than just these two actions. We've got to get to the heart of the problem, find out the whys and then act. Now, if we're saying that the, the booze pops and those vendors are attracting the wrong element to our entertainment district, if that's what we're saying, and it sounds like to me, then perhaps we need to go even further. Because public safety is our number one priority. And from what I've heard from my fellow council members, how bad it is down there. This is a serious problem. I drove down yet last night just to check things out. I knew it was a Monday night, okay, but I drove down anyway. And, and it did seem a little peaceful and I am going to try this weekend. But I think both of these need to be deferred and given much more thought. and given much more thought. And perhaps we need to take even more drastic measures to protect the public safety of the residents of this city. And what I heard from Seekings, what I heard from Appel, what I've heard from Councilmember De, Del Chapo, we've got a serious problem. And these are people on the Public Safety Committee. We have a serious problem that goes beyond these two actions. So I think we should defer both and, and really have further and more lengthy discussions on cause and effect. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregory. Does anybody else that has not been heard would like to speak? Okay? Anyone would like a little follow-up? Just a short follow-up? Councilmember Waring, and then Councilmember Shade.
Yeah, when he leaves it on. Yeah, I think when, when you leave your.
I didn't see you raise your hand, I'm sorry.
And I'm, I'm not going to belabor this. I just want to make sure that I'm on the record as, as, you know, Chief is in front of us, Councilman Appel, Councilman Seekings are absolutely right. This is what they're requesting. We need to act tonight. Deferral is not an option for us. Our job is to make decisions. We need to make decisions and not punt. We've got two or three times to make sure that we can make sure it changes. My, my issue with the vendor ordinance was simply placement. The timeline when they end, I get it. You don't want to attract folks after the bars close. I understand that. But I do not want to, to limit the ability for a small vendor to operate a stand. These are shawarma folks selling shawarma sandwiches till, you know, midnight, 1 o'clock. They are doing no harm. After 1 o'clock, I get it. I understand completely. As far as the curfew for, for our youth, I do think that that needs more massaging, but there is no reason for us to, to defer that. We can do that on second, third reading. Chief is in front of us asking for this. I've been down at King Street. And Ross is not speaking hyperbole. And, and Councilman Gregory is not speaking hyperbole. We have a serious challenge on our hands. And as councilmembers, deferring this is just punting. Thank you.
Councilmember Waring.
Thank you. Listen, I, I take all my councilmen seriously. I don't think anybody's making anything up to me. Okay? But there are those on the Public Safety Committee that simply have more information than many of us who are not on the Public Safety Committee. And, and all due respect, Ms., Ms. Del Chapo, I respect the fact that you zoomed in Friday. All of us can zoom in on all committee meetings all the time. I couldn't. I don't have that information. Obviously, the chief presented information that, uh, to the committee that's public. This is that serious. Uh, the cause and effect from the bullets being in the Leon's window and the vendors, can you address that, Chief, to say, or some of the issues that we don't have? Because if we need to make this, I'm not a guy that punts. And I'm not a guy that abstains unless I just wasn't in the room when the issue was discussed. Some of the issues that, when it comes to public safety that you think we need to address tonight and why, that cause and effect, can you address some of that right now? For those of us who didn't hear on the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you for the opportunity, for this engagement. And let me just say a few things. One, I view this as a continuum. And we've been meeting for months. This is not just, hey, we got to do this tonight. We're just a knee-jerk reaction. This is an ongoing dialogue with the business community, with the Public Safety Committee, with, with residents, with councilmembers. This is a significant conversation. It's not just something that happened overnight. It's not going to get fixed overnight. It's not something that's unique to the City of Charleston. It's something that's occurring throughout our state, throughout our region, throughout our country. There's a significant spike in violence. And I'm just going to hit on some specifics related to this conversation. There's varied problems and there's varied approaches. And we've already done some things. Some of those things have been mentioned with the traffic patterns, with nuisance businesses frankly. And I'll, I'll hit on a few of those things. This is but a step in the right direction. But it's not, nobody's picking on any singular vendor tonight. I, I want to make that clear. I don't think anybody's trying to single anybody out. We're trying to get to a place where we don't attract the wrong people to King Street. And I'll name some of those people. Young people, gangs, guns, drugs, excessive alcohol, and retaliation. Those are all things that are not good for our safety. And those are things that have increased that are down there at not just 1:30 or 2, 3, 4, 5 in the morning. And why are they down there? Because these businesses are still open and they're attracting people. And they're drinking excessively and then they're saying, hey, let's go get some more beer. Hey, the drug dealer's around the corner. Let's go buy some dope. Let's do all these other things. And oh, by the way, let's invite your other friends down here because a lot of the other areas in this region have shut down their businesses. They're not open. And those same people now have come here because we are open till 3 or 4. And we, we've kind of encouraged some of that behavior. Increasing violent crime. I'll just name a few things. We referenced the, the three people shot and three stabbed a few weeks ago. What times did that occur? 2:30, 3:30 in the morning. Mary Street Parking Garage, a week before that, a 17-year-old female was shot in the foot. I think she might have lost her leg or lost her foot. I'm, I'm not sure about that, but I think she might have actually lost her foot from that. 17 years old. Increasing intoxication after hours. Uh, increasing presence after hours. With the COVID, we have colleges that now have relocated to our city because their cities are closed and ours is open. They've come here. And let me just name some of the main colleges. Amherst from Massachusetts, Colgate from New York, Middleburg from Vermont, Kenyon from Ohio, Duke from North Carolina, Wake Forest, North Carolina, UNC Chapel Hill, and others. They literally have rented out houses and they're going to their schools remotely, taking their classes online and coming here to party. And it's, it, those things, it's a combination of a whole lot of different things are, are adding to underage drinkers. We have certain problem establishments. And I'll call them out. I won't call them out by name tonight, but I will tell you right now, the business community, my officers, the mayor, and others, including Councilmember Seekings, are tired of it. They are nuisance establishments. They are encouraging underage drinking. They're encouraging gang members to come to their establishments. And as a direct result, they're adding to the problems that we have on King Street after closing time. And the direct outcome is some of this violent and some of these things that have occurred. We are beginning to deal with those problem establishments. I'll throw another thing on top of this. Opioids. 19, 20, 21, if you look at the chart, it's going directly in the wrong direction. The increased overdoses and the increased deaths are unbelievable. The state of South Carolina, number one in the country. Worst state in the entire country with opioid overdoses. We just earned that distinction recently. And that's something that is overlapping all of this. Last Saturday night, and I was on the phone with Reggie Burgess early Sunday morning, just was in a meeting with him a few hours ago. We were working very closely together because that could have just as easily happened here. 14 kids shot. One 14-year-old young lady killed. Gang signs, retaliation, girls fighting each other, and everybody has a gun and they don't hesitate to shoot each other. That's a problem. I can't agree more with this conversation that there's no easy solution, that this is comprehensive, that it's much bigger than a food vendor. But there are some things that we could do that will have an impact. And, and I pray to God, maybe we can save one life. And if we can do that, it's all worth it. I can't imagine Reggie going to that family and having to, to sit down with that mother. And I can promise you, I'm tired of sitting here with these mothers. And, and you'll never forget the, the sound of a wailing mother's voice as she wails over her child laying on the concrete, dead from a gunshot wound. And I'm telling you, it happens too often. It just happened last night again in our city. And think about that. I was just talking to one of our officers who's an SRO in our schools just an hour ago. I'm sitting here in this meeting, talking to him. And he's telling me, how hard is it for these kids that were involved in that shooting Saturday night in North Charleston to go to school now and take a test? And he said, hey, what happened to your foot while I got shot? I was in that shooting. Well, now I got to take a test. Think about the PTSD and the trauma related to that. Think about a 13-year-old worried about taking their exam, but at the same time, they can't sleep at night because they're worried about bullets coming through their windows. Yeah, we have big problems. And it's much more significant than one street vendor. But we can solve it one thing at a time. And so, um, that was not after midnight, by the way. So this curfew, and, and we don't need to talk a whole lot about that tonight, is not a solution. It never was. And it's been very divisive. And I've, I've said that I think it should be just taken off the table because it's so divisive. And the solution, the answer to this is all of us coming together, which is what I'm hearing tonight. We have to get together and have some unanimity in, in, in our approaches. It has to be comprehensive. And it has to go, as Mr. Lawrence says so earlier, it can't just be the police. We don't have the capacity to fix all these problems. We're good at making arrests. We've made arrests in almost every one of these cases. And we're working with the feds and we're working with the state solicitor and everybody's working together. And I'm just going to throw this out since we're in a public forum and we're talking about this problem of violence. In about a 10-year period, I'm told we had about five officer-involved shootings. The first two months this year, we had three. I had an officer shot. We're lucky we didn't have a funeral for one of our police officers. Yes, we have a violence problem in our city. And what do we get in return? Constitutional carry. Don't get me started on that. We need assistance. Throw me a, a life raft. I need one. Don't throw me an anchor and hit me over the head with an anvil. It doesn't help. There's a lot of things that we can do to address and solve these problems. So, um, I'll just end with this. And I think Mr. Lawrence said this also. It's a shared responsibility. Our young children don't belong on King Street at 3 or 4 in the morning stabbing and shooting each other. I don't believe a curfew is the answer. That's been very divisive. It's been very poorly received. And I've gotten a lot of good feedback from good people in the community that have said, chief, that's not the answer. It's not going to help us. So I don't know the answer. I don't think that's it. I don't think that was ever designed to solve this problem. But I, we have a problem. And I'm thankful for the business community because they've been highly engaging. I think they've been sacrificial. And same thing with all of our communities, to get together and, and it's going to take a commitment. Not everybody's going to be happy. But I'll just say this last piece is King Street needs to shut down. It needs to shut down earlier across the board so that people have an incentive at some point to go home. And so we can clean the streets with our street sweepers. And I think that's going to make a huge difference.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, I want to amend my motion uh, on, based on what the chief has said. Your timeframe, uh, I guess for these vendors, you are recommending what?
1 o'clock.
I think 1 o'clock is where we're headed. And we're going to meet with the businesses this week to have that conversation and that discussion. But I think King Street should shut down at 1 o'clock. That's my, my, I think that would help significantly.
Can I make a suggestion? You know, we have a motion on the floor to defer both of these items. And we've had some great discussion here. And I think we all recognize there are some, some changes that we can make to this vendor ordinance. But, um, uh, we have layered a lot of solutions or, or pieces to this puzzle already, including the sweet street sweeping and the one-way. And by the way, I've called all of our departments to the fore, the fire marshal to make sure people are complying with their occupancy livability and make sure people pulling in the trash cans, zoning, traffic and transportation. We're all in on this issue and keeping our city safe and making King Street the entertainment district that it deserves to be. But could I suggest that we give first reading to number A? And then, and we can change it next time with more input. And then rather than defer B, go ahead and withdraw it. Take it off the table, as the chief has said. We've had significant input here today. Was the event that happened in North Charleston the other day, uh, evening happened at 10:30 at night? I mean, if you have a curfew at midnight, it, it would have had no effect. So we need to rethink bringing something like that. But I think A is a legitimate measure that we should take. And go ahead and give it first reading tonight. And then we can modify it at our next meeting.
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me, uh, I guess, point of order. Point of order. I withdraw my motion to defer.
Thank you. God bless. Can I entertain a motion that we give first reading to A and withdraw B?
Second.
Councilmember Shade. You so moved?
Second.
Okay, and we got a second. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Yeah, Councilmember Gregory. Yeah.
I listened intently to what the chief said. And I think the chief and I are pretty much in agreement. When did we make the change as a city from closing things down or stop? I, I think we, we went up to 2 o'clock. At one point, we were what, at 12:30? Where were we? No, it was 4 o'clock.
All night long.
Right. But I mean, but, but, but we also had, we had to vote for it to be it until 2. Prior to that, what time was it? 4. 4 in the morning?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was early. I'm sorry.
No, sir, it was 4. 2 was backing it, backing it off. And before it was 4, it was all night long.
We need to back it.
When I worked for Mayor Riley in the 90s, we had bars that were open 24/7.
We need to back it.
Absolutely.
Who is the second?
Councilmember Waring.
Seconded by everybody.
Seconded by everybody. So I'm going to call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, guys, have it. One nay. One A, thank you very much. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. And let's continue to get some feedback and engagement from our business community and make those suggestions. Councilmember Sacran, that we feel are appropriate to the vendor ordinance. Councilmember Mitchell.
Let's just be quick. On the ordinance that we just, we took out the curfew ordinance. And I just want to make sure that people know when this first came up, I did it because of a safety reason. And I'm down there all the time too, because I live on King Street. So I'm always down King Street, up and down King Street on the weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. Those are days. And I know things was going on, but I was hate seeing losing so many of our young people. A lot of young people are dying. And my thing was a safetiness to try to find some mechanism what we could use to try to save our young people down there on King Street. What's happening? You have these gangs, I don't know if you know about gangs. I know about gangs from living in New York, I've been around a lot of gangs. You have the Crypto Bloods and all that right here in the City of Charleston now, and other gangs. You have the females that's in gangs. And they will use guns and everything else and not afraid to use it. This is what we have down here that's coming in on King Street from Somerville, Goose Creek, all these different counties, they're coming here in the City of Charleston. And that's what we are running into. I don't know a solution to it, but I was trying to find some way that we could save our young people. Because we are losing it, just like last night. Most of the council members don't even know that I was getting more beat up by this ordinance than anybody else here on council. Till they was going to come by and march up and down my house. See, a lot of you all don't know what I was going through as being African-American and that's what it was doing to me. But I said, the thing is that with me, I feel if I'm doing something correct and it's right for my young people and I have grands and kids that's out here, doesn't matter. I'll stand for it and I'll take it. And see, that's why it's very hard when you see these things going on and you're seeing a young person laying out there, a mother screaming and holling and you going through. They're not coming back, it is, kids are not coming back. Last night, I was out last night till early this morning. I had a shooting on Johnson Street, which is my district. Young, one young man died. The other young man got shot twice in the leg. That's another young man is gone. It was no drug related at that time. But you don't know if the stamp they were saying is stamped from what happened in North Charleston. So it's going to be another repercussion, it's going to be some more coming. They already said it last night, I was out there till 2 o'clock this morning. And I'm always out there when something is happening in the district that I represent. And so this King Street is also a district I represent, this is the entertainment district. So I'm out there also. So I just want to throw that out to everyone and let them know that we have to do something. I don't know what's the answer. And I spoke to my colleagues, Councilman Del Chapo, she called me. I spoke to Councilman Griffin, he called me and get the input from me. And I was telling them what I felt, what I feel that something could be done. I spoke to Councilman Gregory, he gave me his input on it. And I recognized what they were saying. I understood what they were saying. But my thing was always because of a safetiness. And I spoke to the chief on numerous occasions. He was calling me back and forth, back and forth, we trying to get something done and see what we could do for King Street. So I just want to throw that out to you, but something had to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Mitchell. Councilmember Shade, is that the end of your report?
Well, I was just going to make sure, Mayor, that we pass A as amended with those four changes to it.
Correct.
And then that would be my report.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next up is our Committee on Ways and Means, Councilmember Gregory.
Second move for approval, Mayor.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Now bill's up for second reading, we have six items.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on 1 through 6? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Now for third reading and ratification. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Next up is our bills for first reading. First, we have.
1 and 2, bills, so move.
Bill 1 and 2.
Excuse me?
Number 1 is a rezoning of 584 Meeting Street. And then number 2 is to make permanent our.
I have to recuse myself from M1.
We're going to, we have a recusal.
Sorry about that.
From Councilmember Appell on M1.
So move.
We got a motion though to approve both 1 and 2, or we're going to take them separately? Let's take them separately since we have a recusal. So who wants to second number 1? We've got a second. Any questions or discussion on number 1? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. So next is number 2. Second, we got a motion to approve. Councilmember Appell, can I call on you for a remark while I sign these six documents?
Most of the time, people don't ask me to speak, that's pretty amazing. To speak about M2 and the parking issue? Oh, well, you know, I think I've said a lot about this over the last several months. And this has been a great collaborative effort. You know, I'm not the only councilperson pushing this. Councilman Seekings has been tremendous in this. Councilwoman Del Chapo as well. You know, eliminating minimum parking requirements is the way of the future. This is how we activate King Street and we help turn over vacancies. I'm not sure about the most up-to-date statistics, but I can tell you this ordinance that's been in effect over the last several months has resulted in vacancies on King Street turning over. It's been a success. I'm glad that we're making it permanent. And frankly, I'd like to expand it. And I'd like to have that conversation with everybody. Certainly the councilmembers whose districts this is in. You know, and we want to do it in a balanced way, of course. But we want our, we want our cities to thrive.
Okay, I've signed them all.
I'm sorry?
I've signed them all.
The filibuster over, you're done.
Okay, good, we're done, we're good, let's vote.
Any further discussion? All in favor, number 2, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it. Our next meeting will be on June 15. And we're going to be at the Bee's Ferry Recreation Center, West Ashley. Any further business to come before us tonight? Hearing none, we stand adjourned.